We'll be reconvening the Board of Supervisors for today. Can we have a rule call, please?
Yes, good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present.
Thank you. And the announcement of Spanish Supervision Service, Diego.
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Diego Selly. Seré intérprete español inglés, inglés español para el día de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario y necesita servicio de intérprete, por favor, hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Please let us all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few additions and corrections. Can we go over those?
Yes. Under ceremonial resolutions, we are going to change sponsor's name from Supervisor Church to Supervisor Alejo for item number eight. Removal under PM Scheduled Matters, the County Administrative Office has requested item number 15 to be removed from the agenda. Under general government consent for item number two, a revised board report and resolution were received. Also, under general government consent for item number forty-five, the department is requesting this item to be moved to Tuesday, April 2nd. Also, under public works, facilities, and parks consent, we're going to remove item number fifty-two as it's a duplicate of item number fifty-four. And lastly, also under public works, facilities, and parks consent for item number fifty-six point one, a revised attachment B was received.
Thank you. And we'll go on to ceremonial resolutions. We have seven today, and they are all going to be presented. Is any anybody in the board would like to comment or make a motion on these? Motion by Supervisor Lejo, second by Supervisor Lopez to approve. First, I'll see if there's any public comment on this. See no public comment in the resolutions. All those in favor then? If I say a fight by aye, aye.
Aye.
Close, passes. With that, I'll do the first two with recognizing April as Autism Spectrum Disorder and also the resolution designating Arts, Culture, Creativity Month, and then Supervisor Askew will follow me with the one honoring the Friends of the Libraries. Catherine Johnston and Kristen Algor over there? There we go. April is designated as Autism Spectrum Disorder Month, and you know, autism, as I think many of you know, affects millions of individuals worldwide and about one in every thirty-six children in the U.S. You know, this with three percent of our children experiencing this disorder is really a, you know, a major health concern. So the Board of Supervisors presents this resolution as an expression of commitment to the importance of early diagnosis of autism, the development of empathetic support systems across society, and the fundamental value of neurodiversity in our workforce. And with that, you know, if you would like, we'd like to say a couple of words, and I want to present this resolution to you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Neurodiversity in the Workplace ERG, we humbly thank you for your support in this resolution. Our ERG Employee Resource Group aims to educate and demystify neurodiversity in our community and to our fellow county employees. If you're interested in joining, you can send an email to the neurodiversity inbox, check out the CRO website, or come see us outside the chambers today. We'll have a table out there until 1:00 p.m. if you have any questions.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for this very important, you know, recognition of this disorder. Thank you very much. Jackie, do you want to come up here? Okay, the proper one here. There we go.
It's quite a stack.
Thank you, Jackie. And so April is also Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. And since nineteen, since 2019, Monterey County has joined our fellow California counties and designate April as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. We recognize the participation of in the arts inspires discovery, lifelong learning, and joy, and it creates connections, encourages understanding, and strengthens communities. And you know, artwork is real work. It brings well-paid jobs, downstream benefits to our community, and California employs the highest number of people in creative industries in the nation with the fifth largest, fifth largest economy in the world. California's creative economy represents 7.7% of the state's GDP and represents about 740,000 jobs as of 2021. But so the Arts Council for Monterey County, who we're presenting this to, sustains this critical industry by enriching visual and performing arts education programs, arts and healing programs, and support for local artists, nonprofits, and cultural organizations. And with pleasure, I present this to you. And so you have a few words too as well, Jackie?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors and the staff who put this resolution together. This, we've been coming here since 2019 to remind everyone how important the arts are, especially to our economy. The creative sector in Monterey County is about $1.6 billion a year. The arts themselves are about a half a billion. So we do appreciate the recognition, and I think that's about it. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Askew, do you want to come down and present the one for the Friends of the Libraries?
All right. We've got a crew with us today as we celebrate National Library Week. So if you are here for National Library Week, we've got Hillary Thayer from the Monterey County Free Libraries, Juliet Poole from the Foundation for Monterey County Free Libraries, Ali Aladio with Monterey Public Library, John Gianelli with Friends of the Prunedale Library, Nina McAlwin with Friends of Salinas Public Libraries, Ann Herndon and Nancy Assonio from the Assonio Library, Lisa Allison with Friends of the Carmel Valley Library, Janie Solenden, and Anita McKean with King City Friends of the Library. Fall on in here. Moira Mountain with Friends of the Marina Library, and more. So come on in, and we will, I'm going to pass these out, and then I'm going to read them, read a bit of it, so. All right. So you guys can hold those up while we talk about, and you could scoot all the way in. So I think the cameras are somewhere over here for our friends online. Friends of Libraries and Library Foundations are founded, nurtured, and sustained by community advocacy and supported by community members who donate their time and talents and resources to these nonprofit public library groups. Friends of Libraries and Library Foundations have accomplished such things as funding new bookmobiles, advocating for new branch libraries, supporting programs for children, funding new books for the public, and ensuring that all of our elected officials know about the importance of robust public library services throughout our county. Friends of Libraries and Library Foundations stem from dedicated volunteers, enthusiastic community engagement, and personal passions for reading, learning, literacy, the arts, and public libraries. Our Friends groups here in Monterey County assist with everything from stocking used book sales to hosting fundraisers to advocating for sound and responsive laws and policies at the state, local, and federal levels. We know here in Monterey County that Friends of Libraries and Library Foundations are crucial to the success of our local public library system. The staff who work in our local libraries rely on our Friends groups to make sure that we can pilot new and innovative services, offer engaging programs and opportunities, enhancing critical collections and materials, replacing aging equipment. I could go on and on and on. So therefore, on behalf of the entire Board of the Monterey County Board of Supervisors and all of our residents, we are thrilled and honored to celebrate and recognize the incredible commitment and work that Friends, organizations, and our Monterey County Free Libraries Foundation does in support of ensuring that we have a robust, vibrant, accessible county library system here in Monterey County. So thank you so much. And Juliet? Okay. I don't see Juliet. Yeah, jump on in.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Harry with the Foundation for Monterey County Free Libraries, and I would just like to thank you. We really appreciate this recognition, and we're so happy that we can strengthen the programs in the seventeen Monterey County libraries.
Thank you. And we'll just remind everyone that library cards are free and that just a few years ago, we eliminated fines for overdue books. So if you were worried about going into a library and having an overdue fine that you had to pay, you don't need to worry about that. Come on in, and we want to make sure that you have access to all of the incredible programs and services in all of our libraries in Monterey County. So thank you all so much, and we'll pose for a quick photo.
I think the county librarian should join you. She's sitting out there as a partner. Yeah, Hillary, you're not going to get off easy on this one. Come up. And while they take a photo, can I make a comment, Mr. Chair? Is that okay? I just want to say that these people are incredible human beings. They are, they've lived other lives before they became volunteers, and they've changed trajectories for human beings, including myself. My schoolteacher standing up there, not wanting to face me, Ms. McKean, and Sonia as well had Ms. McKean. You have impacted so many lives in your work before this work, and you're continuing to do so. So thank you for being that path illuminator for so many people in this world. The work you're doing today continues that important work, and this respect, but thank you for being who you are, incredible humans. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to, yeah, go ahead. We have Dr. Moreno in here too, but if, okay. Yes, Dr. Moreno, I believe you have a couple of resolutions. One honoring your, one of your longtime recognition of a longtime employment of Olivia Suarez. Is Olivia, there he is.
All right. Thank you, Chair Church and Board members. Hi, Ed Moreno. I'm the Director of Public Health for Monterey County. I'm the County Health Officer, and it's my pleasure to be here with Olivia today. Olivia's finished a wonderful career with the county, most of that, doing tremendous work for the community through her work in public health. So it's my honor to be here with her and acknowledging all the dedication that she put into this community, the community that we all love and serve. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to someone who's worked closely with, Olivia Patricia.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Valarde, and I was Olivia's manager for her last year that she was with the county. I met Olivia about a year and a half before that, and the first thing when I got there, she was very welcoming. She's a very person that is making sure that you are being treated well, and she did that every single day with each person she spoke with on the phone, any person she met that was a public individuals that were in the area. She always made sure that she was respectful and attentive to them. She did support several units within the Public Health Bureau, and she did so in a great job. She had a lot of, she was very respectful of the job that she did and was passionate about helping individuals. So, and I really thank her for that. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristi Michie. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Health, and Olivia and I are going to have an agreement here. We're not going to cry. I've worked with Olivia for over seventeen years, and she's just, I have so many wonderful stories that I could tell you about her, but she is so compassionate with her clients on the phone. She sat outside my office, and so I got to overhear her with clients all the time. And she not only told people about the services, but she took the time to explain how to access those services. And she was so patient and so, so kind. And she would also go out with staff to introduce them to the community providers. Not many office assistants do that, but she would go out and make sure that new staff had connections in the community. And lastly, Olivia made me laugh, and that's the best gift that she could give me. So I appreciate everything that you did over the years, and we hope you enjoy your retirement because it's well deserved.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to say anything?
Yes. I wasn't expecting this. Said I'm going to cry. I'm very honored to receive this award and for all these years, thirty-seven years and four months, I counted them all together. And I'm honored to work with everybody, my supervisors, coworkers, everybody. And again, I want to give my thanks and my love to all of you for all the years that I've been with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Suarez, for your long service to our, to the people of Monterey County. And Dr. Moreno, you have, he has one more, sorry. It's to, it's to honor this week or the next week of April 1st to 7th as National Public Health Week in Monterey County.
All right, if we could have folks up here. I see environmental health back there. Come on. All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. Again, Ed Moreno, Director of Public Health and the Health Officer for this county. And every year, public health, local public health, state, and local public health at the national level, all celebrate the work that we do, and we want to bring that to the attention of the public that we serve and the communities that we live in. In front of you today are just a few people who represent a variety of programs that public health within County Health Department work. We have folks working here represented, representing our health, public health administration, and we have folks who represent a variety of programs that we have that include, just quickly, chemical disease control and prevention, chronic disease and injury prevention, our public health and environmental health laboratories. We have environmental health here today. We also have, who am I missing, Kristi? Public health nursing and the right of community-based nursing and home visitation programs. And am I missing anyone else? So those are just a few of the programs that we provide. We have a lot more that we provide the community. Some of it you see every day, some of it you don't realize, but you're benefiting from it on a daily basis. So again, this is just making the public aware on an annual basis of the wonderful work that all these folks do in public health on behalf of the Board of Supervisors here in the county of Monterey. So with that, I guess I'll. Kristi Michie, who's the Assistant Director of Public Health. I'd like to, on behalf of Elsa Jimenez, who is the Director of our health agency, we do appreciate this recognition, this ceremony, resolution. Thank all of you and all the support that you provided. So thank you.
Yes.
Thanks again.
Supervisor Adams, did you have a comment?
Yes, if I could make a quick comment to all of you as you are assembled here, I just want to say that I know now everything seems a little bit better, but what you guys did through COVID was unbelievable. It was just, I know what you put up. I just wanted to not let this day of celebration pass without just thanking you again for all of the work that all of you did. I really appreciate it. I know all of us up here feel the same way. It was unbelievable. And all of you, Dr. Moreno, heading it off, you know, Kristi Michie, I don't think the woman ever slept. But all the rest of you, I just want to say thank you again and congratulations.
All right, now I'm up. Yeah, thank you to Public Health. Again, true heroes during the pandemic. We appreciate all you've done. Today I have two special resolutions to present to other, for other special occasions we're having in our county and to also recognize our most important workforce in Monterey County and to celebrate the rich history that we have in terms of labor rights and recognizing the history of agriculture workers. So today, this resolution is recognizing every March 31st, which is this Sunday, Easter. Sunday is also the birthday of labor leader, civil rights leader, Cesar Chavez. And this resolution is recognizing Farm Workers Appreciation Day and Cesar Chavez Day in Monterey County and honoring Centro Binacional para el desarrollo indígena oaxaqueña. If they could come up, I have Estela Hernandez, Salinas Programs Manager, and if you and your team could come up for this recognition. Si se puede presentar, esta resolución es para todo reconocimiento del día trabajadora agrícola en el condado de Monterrey y también reconociendo el trabajo que hace Centro Binacional para nuestras comunidades. Everyone, this is a special occasion because since 2018, Monterey County is the only county who was the first and the only county that recognizes a farm worker appreciation day by an official act by this Board of Supervisors. Agricultural workers, as I said earlier, are our largest workforce. They're the backbone of our economy. And many of us, Supervisor Lopez and I, are standing here before you because we are children and grandchildren of migrant farm workers. So for us, this is a very special day for many of us, but also, we're not here today by coincidence. It's because many people struggled and sacrificed to give their children a better life, to fulfill their dreams, and to fight for labor protections that we have that are common, are the more stringent in California and the most stringent in the United States, but it became about because people fought for better protections for agricultural workers. So today, this is a real honor to declare and recognize this month in this way. And also, it, as we're talking about the pandemic, it took a pandemic for our nation to realize that farm workers are essential workers, that whenever we was sheltering at home, our agricultural workers were working every day, side by side with their coworkers, harvesting crops and fruits and vegetables and placing them in tables all across the United States. So for us, this resolution reads in part, Monterey County's agriculture sector is among the most productive in the world. The total economic impacts of the agricultural production in Monterey County are estimated to almost $12 billion when allied businesses, employee paychecks, and value-added processing are tallied in Monterey County. Our agricultural production helps feed the nation and the rest of the world, home to some of the richest farmlands in the United States. Monterey County is the largest producer of lettuce and the top producer of strawberries, broccoli, wine grapes, and other fresh produce. The inexhaustible efforts of millions of hardworking and dedicated farm workers have contributed greatly to the success of the agricultural industry and to Monterey County being known as the solid bowl of the world. Farm workers in Monterey County contribute significantly to our agricultural accomplishments by toiling in the fields through harsh and extreme weather conditions, growing, harvesting, and preparing goods for markets and destinations abroad, in the United States and abroad. The fruits and vegetables that we enjoy in our daily lives are produced by farm workers who often endure long hours of brack baking and arduous work. Farm workers still dream of providing a better life for their children, but the reality of many having to move from crop to crop, a lack of documented immigration status and other barriers makes this dream hard to achieve. In 1993, the leaders of the Oaxaqueño community founded the Centro Binacional para el desarrollo indígena oaxaqueña to support Oaxacan indigenous communities and their families, many who also work in agriculture. Centro Binacional is the first community-based indigenous-led organization in California. They make sure our communities, culture, languages, and knowledge are recognized and respected by the systems and institutions that impact their lives. So therefore, be it resolved, the County Board of Supervisors recognizes and declares every March 31st as Farm Workers Appreciation Day and Cesar Chavez Day in Monterey County and hereby recognizes the hard work and self-sacrifice that farm workers go through to put food on the table of millions of Americans across our nation and to ensure a stable food supply. Our county expresses our sincerest thanks to our farm workers for providing a bounty to our nation and the entire world. And further be it resolved that we hereby honor Centro Binacional para el desarrollo indígena oaxaqueña for their ongoing effective advocacy efforts on behalf of farm workers and indigenous communities. If we could give them a big round of applause, everyone. We're going to present this to you. And I want to just say, every year that we've done it, we try to recognize different individuals or organizations that really advocate and champion for better lives for farm workers. The first year, I think we recognized all three labor unions, United Farm Workers, UFCW, Teamsters, that represent unionized agricultural workers. We recognize California Rural Legal Assistance Center for Community Advocacy. I think last time it was Clinica del Valle de Salinas and the Growers Shipper Association for their record amount of vaccinations for farm workers during the pandemic. So today, we're recognizing Centro Binacional, a very special organization, to recognize their leaderships and all they've done for indigenous communities throughout Monterey County. Muchas gracias.
That's my intro in Chiqui. I can interpret that in Spanish, but we have fought for thirty years to finally be recognized as a leadership organization in the Monterey County, and the work that each of us does in the community is also recognized. For so long, we have been considered an interpreter organization simple because we have compañeras that speaks different languages. that speaks a different language. She speaks Misteco and she also speaks Misteco de Guerrero, but they're different. So just because we have these compañeras speaking different language, as myself, I speak Tricke, they think that we're just an interpreter organization. But from our community, our organizing around better access to education, health service, and to fight for workers' rights, we are so proud of our advocacy work and our programs and look forward to serve the indigenous community of Monterey County for the years to come. And CBDIO is very grateful and honored to receive this recognition from the Monterey County Board Supervisor. Thank you, Mr. Alejo? Miss Alejo? No sé si quieren decir algo en español. Well, I can read this in Spanish. Hemos luchado durante 30 años para que se ha reconocido Centro Binacional como una de las organizaciones de liderazgo en el condado de Monterrey y que también se reconozca el trabajo que cada uno de nuestras compañeras realizan en la comunidad. Durante mucho tiempo se nos ha considerado una organización de intérprete simplemente porque tenemos compañeros y compañeras que hablan diferente idioma. Pero desde nuestra comunidad organizándose en torno a un mejor acceso a la educación, los servicios de salud y luchar por los derechos de los trabajadores en el campo, estamos muy orgullosos de nuestro trabajo de defensa y nuestro programa y esperamos servir a la comunidad indígena del condado de Monterrey en los años vinideros. Y Centro Binacional para el desarrollo indígena oaxaqueña está muy agradecido, honrado de recibir este reconocimiento de la junta de supervisores del condado de Monterrey y gracias al señor Alejo, el supervisor Alejo.
Thank you. All right, we'll take a photo and a photo, por favor. Last but not least, I want to call up Mayor Kimble Craig. I know you're very busy. Thank you, Mayor, for waiting here through all these presentations. Thank you again for representing your amazing city. Everyone, today, last on these special recognitions, we are celebrating Salinas's 150th anniversary of being established as an incorporated city in the state of California. And I'll let the mayor explain the events that are coming up very shortly, but on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we wanted to kick off this celebration in passing this resolution. And it's a lot of amazing history in this resolution, but I'm going to read part of it. But it says, "In early 1868, a pioneering group of settlers and local businessmen convened at the halfway house the first structure in what would later be known as Old Town Salinas to discuss establishing a town. The town of Salinas was formed and named after the abundant sources of salt from salt ponds and marshes. On September 17, 1872, 112 of the 150 qualified voters signed a petition to incorporate the town of Salinas City." The Monterey County Board of Supervisors granted limited incorporation status to Salinas, and shortly thereafter, Salinas was selected as the county seat. The first railroad tracks were laid in October of 1872, which was a turning point in the town of Salinas. The Southern Pacific Railroad became a hub for transporting produce across the state, and the town began to flourish. The first train arrived at the new depot in Salinas in November of 1872. The state of California then incorporated the town of Salinas on March 4, 1874, as a California city, formally changing the name of the community to Salinas City. It wasn't until the 1900s that the city council would amend the city charter twice to change the name to Salinas and later to the city of Salinas. I think the city helped us on this history. The community, but I didn't want to talk about this part because it says, "The community of East Alasal was established in the early 1930s by the people who had left the Dust Bowl in search of job opportunities during the Great Depression." A significant number of these individuals found employment in the thriving lettuce industry in Salinas, but in 1963, East Alasal became part of the city of Salinas through annexation. For the 150th anniversary of being established as an incorporated city by the state of California, the city of Salinas is celebrating the deep-rooted history, culture, significance of our city and the state's history. And therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby congratulates the city of Salinas and its mayor on the 150th anniversary and encourages the community to join them on April 6, 2024, to commemorate Salinas's 150th celebration. If we could give a big round of applause to Mayor Kimble Craig and present that resolution to you and the mic, and I'll hold it for you meanwhile.
Thank you. I leaned over and told Supervisor Alejo he'd done his homework because that was literally all of the talking points that I had. So what I will say is, while I can't specifically speak to the first 136 years of the city and the governance there, I can speak to the last 14. And I will just acknowledge that we, as a community, are incredibly proud of our residents and the fabric of our community in terms of how diverse and how hardworking and wonderful our community is. I will just take a moment to acknowledge the Board of Supervisors and say thank you for being an incredible partner over more than a decade. I know that we talk about difficult things, and I want to just say thank you for your partnership because the city has been successful in growing and thriving over the last 150 years with its partnerships. And so we haven't always gotten along between the city and the county, and I want to just say that I'm really grateful to this particular board for your ongoing partnership with us in the city. So thank you. And I will acknowledge April 6, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., we have a community celebration down at the train station with the Salinas City's, sorry, the Salinas Welcome Center, as well as the first mayor's house. So just, we'd love for the community to join us there. Thank you.
Thank you. Pass that to you. I'm going to ask if my colleagues want to join us for this photo celebrating 150 years of Salinas. Sonia, please. And I want to say, it is very intentional that we've worked, I think, better today, the county and the city, on a lot of projects, better than we had, and I think in all our previous years. So thank you for your comments, Mayor.
There we go. How was that? A little better. We'll move on to appointments, which we have one. And is there any, this is for Zica Guzman to the Equal Opportunity Civil Rights Advisory Commission. Is there any public comment on this matter?
There's one hand raised, but I don't know if it was for ceremonial resolutions.
We already asked on to that, though, too. If you want to, well, we'll unmute. Was it earlier or?
It's for phone number ending in 837.
Yes. Are you wanting to speak on the appointment?
Hello there?
You're needing to speak on?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Hear you. We're asking for public comment on the appointment that has been made. Do you have public comment on that?
I was trying to comment on the resolution, a couple of resolutions, but they wouldn't allow me to do it.
Thank you very much. We had a public comment for the resolutions earlier that was offered. I'm sorry you missed that. So...
On move approval on appointments, number nine.
Second. We have a second here. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. With that, we'll recess to the Bajar County Sanitation District. And we have one item on here. It's actually a consent item, but I'd like to pull it just for a brief discussion. Couple of questions on there. The, just want to kind of confirm it, the estimated rate after some yearly increases in inflation is that five years from now, the rate will be $92.28. If there's, don't know who might be online at this to discuss this, but I want to just make confirmation that's probably going to be roughly in line with the other sanitation districts that we use as comparables.
Randy's on.
Do we have somebody from Public Works that could answer this? Okay, yes, Mr. Ishi?
Thank you, Chair Church. Excellent question regarding the Pajar County Sanitation District's five-year sewer study pursuant to the Prop 218 process. Our consultant did canvas the area besides looking at the costs of the commensurate cost of service and the projected revenues needed to support the expenditure. I have a staff member who is getting confirmation right now as we speak regarding the benchmarking that they had done to see if that last fifth year correlates with other similar sanitation districts' fifth year. We also bear in mind that they're also on a different rate schedule for increasing their rates, so that's why we're doing some double checking right now. If you could please give us a few minutes to get back to this group, we'd be happy to do so and give you your answer.
That would be good. I have a couple other questions, too, so that might give you, might give Eric some time there. The, in the consultant we use for the report, the report mentions that we're going to be changing from the billing system that's now provided by Monterey One Water to the assessor tax collector, and it only referred to the annual and semi-annual, which has been traditionally the payment schedule, did not refer to the smart easy pay, which means that you can have payments by monthly. I want to, assuming that we're working that in so people will have that option on this, even though the report doesn't state that from the consultant, but I also wanted to see if this particular matter was thoroughly vetted with the community because when Monterey One Water was switching over, it had some controversy.
Thank you for that, Chair Church. Could you please repeat the question of that?
Sure. Yeah, no problem. The report that's attached to the, from the consultant states that we're moving from a monthly billing utilizing Monterey One Water to property tax billing, which, and the reference in there is to what has been the past practice of just annual and biannual payments. It doesn't make any mention to the county's new smart pay process, which allows monthly payments on your tax, on your property tax bill. I want to make sure that this is actually going to be an option, and I want to make sure that we have actually properly vetted this with the community and the Bajar County Sanitation District because being on the Board of Monterey One Water, when it rolled out a plan to use the smart pay, it got some pushback and needed some explanation to the public. So I'm just wanting to confirm that we actually did do inadequate steps there on informing the public of this change and what it might be.
Chair Church, thank you very much for that question and for the clarification. This has been a topic that's been discussed amongst not only the internal team, but has also had now, I want to say, north of three public meetings, and there's more public meetings on this topic. While we are establishing the rate by ordinance, the mechanics of which are things that could be addressed or should be addressed through staff efforts, and in terms of outreach of the actuation, meaning the use of the property tax methods and the smart pay system, that's one that we can certainly make sure is better reinforced.
Okay, thank you. I just, as I say, the consultant did not seem to be aware of our smart pay system, and I just want to make sure that we're going to get this laid out to the communities there and have them fully be able to understand that they were having an option to pay monthly. And I'm sure you'll be doing that. My last question, or last statement, basically, is that I noticed in the publishing notices that the notices for this was going to be published in the Weekly, in Monterey County Weekly. Monterey County Weekly's readership in the Bajar area is limited, let's just say. And I don't think it's the best, the best published newspaper to be utilizing. It should be really be the Watsonville Parone, which is going to have a lot wider readership. And I hope that's going to be included into this.
Thank you for the question and comment, Chair Church. I raised my hand there just to denote that that is something that staff is looking into and how to get published into the Parone and the Watsonville papers.
And do you know if you have any answer back yet on that first question?
Don't have one quite yet, I'm afraid.
Well, I don't want to hold things up here, but if you could maybe just have a chance to let my office know later on, I'm sure it's going to be roughly within the line there, but I'd just like to understand where we might be standing five years from now. Let me ask if there's any public comment on this matter from the Bajar County Sanitation District? I see nobody in the chambers and nobody online. Any of the board members? Nobody on? Yes, for this, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Alejo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. And we'll now, let's see, are there any general, let's see, excuse me. Track my papers here. Anyway, we can, we'll adjourn the Imperial County Sanitation District and reconvene the Board of Supervisors. Roll call, please.
Let the record reflect, all supervisors are present.
And the next item up is the consent calendar. Do we have another readout on this?
Yes, there was additional additions and corrections that was overlooked for item number 41, which at this time, it will be taken off the agenda and brought back at a later time.
And I want to just pull, no, just pull for discussion 34 and 46 for a couple of brief comments. Anybody else have anything? Yes, Supervisor ask you?
Thank you. I need to recuse myself from item 46, which is the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Opportunity. I sit on the Board of Ecology Action, and they are listed as a potential co-applicant and financial sponsor for this item, so if we could take up that one separately.
Okay, we'll pull that one separately. Supervisor Adams?
My understanding was that 45 was going to be put on until April 2nd. Just want to make sure that that's correct.
Well, 45, I believe, is going to go to the Budget Committee, is what I thought I understood, which is meeting this week. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I don't, can we set it for a date? Not set for the board right now? I mean, I could actually bring that one up for a short discussion, too, but since it was being pulled, it wasn't.
I thought it was set for April 2nd.
There's a very quick turnaround, so the earlier announcement was that we were trying to move it to April 2nd, but we were waiting for your concurrence on that. And the reason is because the deadline is April 5th to submit.
Okay. Well, Supervisor Lopez, do you have anything you want to pull on this? These I'm too. Okay, well, then, and that might be a good time for me to bring up both 45 and 46. I actually both have the same kind of comments. Those of these are rather large items, although 46 is purely from the federal government, I believe, about $7 million for electric vehicle car pulls and van pulls for farm workers and for rural constituents. There is no county money, I believe, involved in that one. And 45, it's $6 million. And that one is for some electric charging stations, I believe, and for county vehicles, and does have some impact on our general fund. But both these are rather large, and I feel that there's, I understand we have a deadline here. I would like them to come back for a presentation. Sometimes I think they're both of some public significance. Sometimes I think they're both of some public significance. So I'd be, I'd be happy to go for April 2nd, I'm putting this on here, if we need to, on the consent calendar, but I do think it should really be brought forth to the public at some point here in the board meeting.
We could plan for an update by Cora to provide, you know, as to what applications she's pursuing. These are both for application submittals. It's very possible we may or may not be awarded. Some of the work that she's bringing back on the second will be to support the budget component of it, which was not complete just yet, but we could plan thereafter for a presentation before the board.
But this is only for applying for it, right? So maybe if we actually get granted, it might be the better time to talk about, okay, how are we going to use the grant money? Where's it going to go? And I think that might be a better.
Correct. We could plan on it.
I'm good with that. I just want to make sure we bring them up at some point for a discussion.
We'll make sure that's.
Agreed with you.
Right, and let's see, item 34 was, yeah, this is the one with the, just increasing the contract authority for the county council, DA, and public defender. I, I know we're moving it with several different of these items that have popped up over the last year, where we've been raising what the departments can, can expend money on contracts from a minimum, the minimum's been raised before it has to come to the Board of Supervisors. My, my only, and I'm, I'm all for this, I'm not going to oppose this by any means, but as we're getting to a larger, a larger number going up there, and this is going up to 200,000, that's still a significant amount of money, I think it would be really good if we were able to get reports coming back of, over, from some period of time of what is being spent, just so we, we know where these, where this, this money is going, but that might take a referral at some point, but I just have noticed this trend, and I just wanted to bring it up, and my concerns with it.
If you're agreeable, we can plan on a quarterly report out. Public purchasing can pull data, and we can show that for you. I did have them pull a couple of reports. I just want to verify that the two reports were actually for new contracts within the calendar year, so I'm just waiting for that information.
Yeah.
If I may, Chair, the only problem with quarterly reports on some of the contracts that might be entered into by the district attorney, the public defender and county council, that the actual entering of the contract in of itself might be considered attorney work product, such as if there was a district attorney investigation and they did not want it public because they haven't filed charges yet, that they were using an X to investigate X, Y, or Z. So there could be some attorney-client issues with that.
I, I understand, and that's just one part of the whole county department, and I'm sure there might be some, some similar situations somewhere else that sometime arise, so very good point. Thank you, County Council. With that, I guess we will take up, if there's no other discussion on anything, we can take up all the items except for, I didn't say public comment, thank you very much. Is there any public comment on this matter, on these matters of the consent calendar? I see. One hand raised, yes. This is for a public comment on the consent calendar. Items 19 through 56.1, less those that have been removed.
Phone number ending in 091.
Yes, you have two minutes. This, do you want to make any public comment on the consent calendar items?
I think I made a mistake in raising my hand at this point. This is a general public comment.
We'll be taking it up next. Yes, we'll be taking it up next.
Okay, thank you.
Call you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment, we'll close public comment. First and second on those items. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, and we'll take up item 46. Did you need to recuse yourself?
Yeah, you need to leave the dais. Sorry.
Okay. With that, do we have a motion on number 46? Lahe and Lopez. And with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes for zero with one recusal. And with that, we'll move into public comment. Is there anybody in the chambers that has any general public comments to make, would have two minutes?
Good morning, Board, and I'm Paul Farmer with the Monterey County Business Council. Just a quick update and a thanks to the Board of Supervisors. Micro Enterprise Home Kitchen Operations, known as MICO, the state of California allowed that a few years ago before the pandemic. The county allowed it. I'm here to let you know that I was shocked at the number of people who attended our information session last week on this topic, on how to take their home kitchen operations and kind of make it legal, right? We had over 30 people for the English session last week and over 50 for the Spanish session. So I wanted to let you know, there's a whole economy out there, and we are working, the Building Business Back Program at the Monterey County Business Council is working to help these people so that they can get health permits, and we're also using some of, we're looking at using some of the funding that we have through the county to help defray some of the costs of those permits. So again, just a really high level of interest, and we're also working some other creative things related to that. A number of these people will need additional help in legalizing their businesses, which also dovetails very well with the work we're doing with the Small Business Development Center. We're expecting to put out an, a job offer to the SBDC Director by next week. So we're rolling on all of that stuff. I just wanted to give you a quick update and thank the board for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes.
Hello, my name is Ramona Sial from, well, I live in the Bolsonos neighborhood. I'd like to thank you first, Supervisor Church, cleaning out the culverts, or getting the people to clean out the culverts last year on the street of Paul Avenue really helps when the, when the natural rain comes through and our street doesn't flood anymore when that happens. However, we on the street and in the neighborhood now are looking at the next steps, because this year on January 31st, then, and then evening, I decided to make the good school decision to go to bed early, and that was probably one of the worst decisions I ever made, because within 45 minutes, there were knocks at my door, and when I woke up, I woke up and I was already in a foot of water in my, inside my home. And this time, it was the creek. The creek pushed every, all our backyards, the water came in and just, you know, the street didn't flood first, it was the creek, and we just, we just want to know what the next steps are, what we have to do as a neighborhood and a community to get the trees removed, the silt removed from inside the creek, because it's, at certain points at our creek now, it's just, you can't even tell it's a creek, it's almost like just a little, not a full creek anymore. Yeah, and just want to know what the next steps are.
We would, if you would, I'll contact my office, we can provide you that information. We have quite a few steps we're looking into at this point.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments inside the chambers, online?
Yes. Phone number ending in 091.
Yes, you have two minutes. Just for phone numbers.
Thank you. My name is Sidney Ramsden Scott, and I just wondered what the, what the Board of Supervisors thinks about the U.S. Navy's proposed building of a 690,000 square foot, three-story naval innovation center next to Herman Hall, flash the Del Monte Hotel, and within 1,000 feet of Del Monte Beach and the Monterey Bay Marine Sanctuary. We think, those of us who've been talking together, think that such a project requires a full environmental impact report rather than just the naval, the Navy's environmental assessment. We don't feel that that meets the qualifications that the NEPA, which is National Environmental Act, specifies. So we, we wondered what you thought about that. We, we want you to be aware, if you're not already aware, of the environmental assessments saying themselves that it's going to take two to three years to build this property on, on the naval postgraduate grounds, and during that time, there will be 50 times per day during the week, work week, times a slowdown and stoppage on Del Monte Avenue and therefore on Highway 1, for construction vehicles to enter the naval postgraduate school grounds. And so that is a big problem, also a problem, the negative effects of the sounds, it's very percussive, the sounds of the pile drive that will be experienced daily during the week.
Thank you, your two minutes are up.
At two local schools.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
Next, phone number ending in 837.
Yes, 837, you have two minutes.
Hi, Brian Rosen here, and I just want to address the very high cost of the SURF project, which will cost $79 million for about between five and six mile long so-called rapid transit busway between basically Marina and Seaside. My God, you could probably put a rail in between that for that same project, and it wouldn't have any impact because the rail is already there. The busway would take out seven, 92 trees, take out a lot of dunes. The environmental assessment talks about significant environmental impacts to species and, and mitigation, but there really needs to be a full EIR, but you, you can't really mitigate loss of habitat, loss of sand dunes. You know, it's a slow route from Salinas to Monterey, will save 11 minutes projected during rush hour, 11 minutes of driving time, but on an hour-long bus, almost, once you get onto the city street, you're going to lose that 11 minutes of saving. It's going to still be quicker to take your car, because most of that bus route, about three-quarters of it, will be on slow city streets, and on the non-so-called rapid transit busway, it's a huge amount of money. If we're serious about climate change, we need to have the rail come in, it's going to have much more connectivity, it won't just be a limited route. Or we could have a carpool lane, which would be more effective. The buses could go on that carpool lane that, between Marina and Seaside, there's a six-lane highway there. It would be a heck of a lot cheaper, and we really need a rail there, it will have much less environmental impact, and once that comes in, we build this thing for nothing. And the TMC representatives tell me they'd rather have a rail there, and so we please work really hard to get the money for the rail and make that happen. Rail is the only thing that can bypass the crowded city streets. Are my minutes up yet? It seems like it.
Yes, it is now. Thank you.
And phone number ending in 705.
Yes, 705, you have two minutes.
Yes, good morning, Supervisors. I don't know if you realize it or not, but our bay, Monterey Bay, is probably the most important sanctuary in the world, and this is a source from Blue Planet, I hope you all watch it. And it talks about, the reason it's so important is that once a year during the phytoplankton bloom, all the marine animals, all the fish, all the whales, all the birds, everything converges here to feed on this incredible plankton bloom. And we are heating up the bay from 50 degrees to a record-high 68 degrees, all due to traffic, to not providing really good mass transit, so that we want to get in the bus, we want to get in the train. So it's your responsibility to make sure you save as many trees as you can, big trees, because one big tree harbors a ton of CO2 a year, like the eucalyptus, and gives us 260 pounds of oxygen a year, and it creates rainfall, and they actually do so much for us that we must save every single tree, because it's the only thing that cleans up our air pollutants and keeps this area cool. And we don't have any other mechanism right now to do so. So trees are the only thing, when you stand under a tree, you get the shade, you understand how cool they keep our climate. So we, this is a national emergency we're under, we've had hurricane weather this last time, cyclones in Los Angeles. Please, Supervisors, please do not cut down any more trees. Make that a real and charitable goal. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, no other comments. So we will close public comment and move on to scheduled matters of item 12, which is considering approval of the status updates on the 2223 Monterey County Civil Grand Jury Report. Mr.
Good morning.
There we go, online. Mr. Chilos.
Good morning, Chair Church and Board members. I have a very brief opening comment here, and then I would like to turn this over to the, back to the board. As you're aware, the Civil Grand Jury provides an important function in terms of oversight of governmental operations and the ability to investigate and report and make recommendations and findings on matters that they investigate. Today, we're being, we're asking the board to approve status updates on three components of the 202223 Civil Grand Jury Report. They had to do with the public guardian function, the hiring processes for county government, and the noise ordinance. The Civil Grand Jury has asked that we respond back by March 26th of this year. This goes back to a letter dated February 1st, the Civil Grand Jury requested a status update, and essentially, the Civil Grand Jury wants to understand where we are in meeting the various actions that we said, the county said it would do as part of the response to the 23, 2223 Civil Grand Jury Report. And specifically, there are three reports that they're asking about. One of them involves the Health Department and Social Services, and the actual report title is "Public Guardian: The Final Helping Hand, A Mandate to Care." The second one is, was directed to the Human Resources Department and the Civil Rights Office, having to do with human resources, health wanted a speedier way to hire in terms of county hiring processes. And the third report had to do with the noise ordinance, Sleepless in Monterey County is the title of it, and that is a, a report that was directed to the Housing and Community Development Department and the Sheriff's Office. The departments that I named just then have all participated and provided status updates that are attached to your board report today. The, the status updates are fairly straightforward. I think in, in some of the cases, the county was able to meet the deadlines that were laid out in the earlier response to the Civil Grand Jury. In some cases, there's a little bit more time needed, and, and those works are in process, and our report lays that out for you. The department representatives, in terms of those departments that prepared the responses, are present today if the board has specific questions about those. As part of this process, we wanted, we had a meeting with the county council, the, our office and the Civil Grand Jury foreperson to kind of better coordinate how these requests for updates come to us. I think we've got that pretty well straightened out at this point in time, and it should be a little smoother going forward. I'd like to thank Christine Larabel, the foreperson of the Civil Grand Jury, for her help with this, all the Civil Grand Jury members for their time and effort that they put into this work, Karina Boconovich from our office, who was very helpful in coordinating this, and Sandra Ontiveros, county council staff, who is a key component of the Civil Grand Jury response process. The departments that are present today, either the department head or their representative in case the board has specific questions, are Health Department, Social Services, HR, Human Resources, the Civil Rights Office, Housing and Community Development, and the Sheriff's Office. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn this back to you. If the board has specific questions, those departmental representatives are here and can respond. Thank you very much, appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chilos. Are there any comments? Yes, Supervisor Adams?
Thank you. I do have a comment to make. Having served on the grand jury some years ago, I just want to say to you, Nick, and to the department heads present, how much I appreciate the, the attention and the how much I appreciate the attention and the focus that you're giving to the grand jury, the Civil Grand Jury, and the reports. I can remember there was a time within our own county where the comments from the grand jury were not taken with the seriousness that they should be. And I believe that we are doing so now. So just wanted to say thank you to the staff and thank you again to the volunteers of the grand jury who really, you know, ensure that we've got a system that works. So thank you all for being here today.
Supervisor Askew?
Thank you. Echo Supervisor Adams' comments. I think it's good to see the update for us as well. And I just want to appreciate the Civil Grand Jury for following up and monitoring our progress because I think that's how you hold us accountable to do what we say we were going to do when we responded. So I just want to say I appreciate that. I did have on the, the questions I have are specific to the human resources response. And I'll just acknowledge on response to, where we talk about streamlining our hiring procedures to reduce the number of steps and time needed to fill positions, we put that we would be working on that and have, you know, some things done by March thirty-first. I do recognize that's an ongoing challenge and ongoing process. But I want to acknowledge that the need for us to make sure that we're doing that is continually ongoing and is something that we continue to hear feedback about, both from individuals in the community who are applying to work for the county, as well as from our department heads who are desperately trying to fill positions. So I see that we've got our, do a human resources director here in the room and just reiterate our commitment to work with you to make that happen. So wanted to call that one up specifically. And then on, let's see here, on the third, recommendation number three is regarding developing an incentive plan for both county and non-county employee subject matter experts to serve on panels for employee recruitment by September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. And the question that the Civil Grand Jury asked was around compensation for individuals who are providing their expertise to us. And I recognize that, you know, we do have limited and different restrictions within how we bring those folks on and how we can compensate. But I also want to balance that with the recognition that I think we do have many family, community members who have a unique expertise that comes from the realities that they experience due to childcare or family care responsibilities, travel, having to take time off of work. And I would love to make sure that we're finding ways to bring that type of expertise and to value that type of expertise in all of our, in all the spaces where we're asking for community input. So I would, I recognize at this point we don't have an intent to provide compensation for community members who serve as subject matter experts. And I know that we're stating here that it has not been an obstacle for getting community members to serve. But I would just ask us to think a little bit harder about that and about the types of expertise that we're referencing and valuing as a county. So just, but happy to support the response. And again, a huge thanks to the Civil Grand Jury for the follow-up on this.
Any other questions, comments here? I also want to just state, you know, I'm a firm believer in the grand jury system as a watchdog over county government and particularly wanted to again point out as others have, the real dedication that members of the grand jury really take over of a period of year. And it's a great commitment and it's a great responsibility. And it provides a great benefit to this county. With that, I want to go out to a public comment on this. Is there anybody in chambers or online? No public comment? Bring them back here for the board for any other comments or a motion on. By Supervisor Alahoe, second. By Supervisor Askew? I saw you nod on your head, so I was assuming that was a second. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? And so the recommendation passes. And with that, we come to end of the morning's agenda here at eleven forty-six, a little bit early. So everybody gets a little few minutes for lunch. And we'll return at one-thirty. Thank you.
Mic check, one, two, three. 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 Wireless mic one check. Wireless mic two check. Mic one check. Mic three check. Mic five check. Mic six check. Mic eight check. Mic ten check. Mic twelve check. Mic twelve check. Staff mic one check. Staff mic two check.
Call to order the Board of Supervisors afternoon session here at 1:30. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, good afternoon. Let the record reflect, all supervisors are present. With Alejo coming in soon.
Thank you. We have the Spanish interpretation and announcement by Diego Salas.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Diego Celis. Eres un intérprete español-inglés, inglés-español para la reunión de hoy. Si está planeando hacer un comentario y necesita servicio de intérprete, por favor, hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
We had three items scheduled on today's agenda. The last item, item 15, has been removed from today's agenda. First item up is item 13 from the presentation from SNP, Spay-Neuter Imperative Project uptown. Please, please go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura James and this is Lisa Sears. And we're honored to be here during Women's History Month. And we want to recognize Supervisor Adams and Supervisor Askew as women on the dais. We ourselves are proud to present the SNP, Bus Spay and Neuter Imperative Project to all of you. Our founder, Melanie Shearer, is a trailblazer and animal advocate. Between the two of us, Lisa and I, have over 40 years of animal rescue between, between us. A little bit about Melanie. She started in the Coachella Valley. She was raising thousands of dollars of funds for rescue. And what she realizes is that you cannot rescue your way out of animal overpopulation. In 2016, she purchased a spay and neuter bus and she decided it was time to spay and neuter animals in order to end animal overpopulation in our state. After that, she decided to move to Monterey County and she launched the SNP bus here in Monterey County. Our mission at SNP is to get into the socially vulnerable communities by providing low-cost spay and neuter services in those underserved communities. And we actively prevent the suffering and death of unwanted animals due to overpopulation. Here's a little sneak peek of what we're going to talk about today, a little bit about our agenda, and then some of the fundraising activities that we do. In addition to funds that we request from the county, we also do a lot of fundraising activities to bring clinics to those neighborhoods that need us most.
Now, we're going to talk about just what SNP Bus has accomplished in the state of California. Since it was founded in the Coachella Valley in 2016, we have fixed over 70,000 pets and feral cats. Think about the impact of that. 70,000 pets no longer able to add to our pet overpopulation problem in California. My personal history with rescue goes back over two decades. I was volunteering in big box rescue with SPCA Monterey County. And I was so excited when SNP Bus came on board here in Monterey County in 2018 that I started volunteering with them. I saw the need that we really tried, needed to try something different, something that we had not tried in the past, which was getting the services of spay-neuter to those who really needed them. Not everyone is so privileged that they can afford a $500 to $1,000 spay-neuter, and therein lies our problem. We needed to get to the remote areas of the county and we needed to get to the underserved addresses. So I was really excited to jump on board in 2018. And we were very excited to receive your funding and for you to be one of the first progressive counties in the state to fund SNP Bus in 2018. This map speaks to just how many counties are reaching out to SNP Bus now for services. The need is overwhelming. But we have a phrase in SNP Bus, we love to say, "If you build it, they will come." It didn't first originate talking about spay-neuter, of course, but it's very appropriate because, boy, did they come. They came to Monterey County. Fifty-four hundred and 26 animals got fixed last year. And in the state of California, we fixed over 20,000.
Seventy thousand animals have been spayed and neutered across California. That is a pretty significant number, if you ask me. We wanted to share a little bit about what SNP does in the community. In addition to offering spay and neuter services, we also have the SNP Kids program where we bring educational resources and books to schools and clinics. We also donated deputy chants to the Monterey County Sheriff's Department. We launched the SNP Volantines program. And what they've done is raised funds to host two clinics in East Salinas and also provide animal supplies like pets, leashes, and things like that. In addition to that, we have several rescue partnerships. One we're especially proud of is with the German Shepherd Rescue. And you see this little picture here says clinic full. There were three clinics hosted by this exact rescue to offer citizens in the community in Monterey County who have German Shepherds or German Shepherd mixes to get their pets fixed for free. And so we know that the shelters are flooded with Huskies and Shepherds. And so partnering with rescues like this to just offer funding for one specific breed is pretty exciting. In addition, we met with the local ACOs at Hitchcock. And during that time, they let us know that it's important for people to keep their pets at home. And in order to do that, it was, it would mean having some supplies there. So leashes and collars, food dishes and, and food are all important. And so we brought these items to cities like San Lucas and San Ardo's and East Salinas so that way, you know, those pets have the needs that they, the things that they need. And in addition to that, we launched SNP in Need. SNP in Need is helping to provide veterinary care for citizens in the community who need assistance for emergency-type treatments outside of the traditional spay and neuter services. And we also hosted a TNR workshop where we taught people in the community how to trap, release feral kitty cats so that they can manage the animal overpopulation in their city. Here's just kind of a snapshot of a couple of highlights. On the left, you see some pictures from our SNP Kids where you see during the clinics where passing out the books. And we see during the school, you also see Supervisor Lopez here at some of the clinics passing out books to the kids in need, which is fantastic. And you see some pictures of some patients from their SNP in Need program. And then here at the bottom and on the right-hand side are the SNP Volantines. And these are high school students who are working to get volunteer hours. And they hosted bake sales and other various events to raise funds to host two clinics in East Salinas and also purchase leashes and food and pet supplies so that we could pass out in the community as well.
Talk about our clinics recap by year. Last fiscal year, we were able to fix 992 pets and feral cats for residents of unincorporated areas. And that was in 30 clinics that we did. The average number of pets per clinic was 33. Fast forward to this fiscal year, we're not done yet, but so far, we fixed 542 animals. We've completed 18 out of the 27 clinics we've been awarded. We do have more clinics scheduled coming up here before the end of the fiscal year. The average number of animals per clinic was 30. And the reason why that average number has gone down is actually for a very exciting reason. We are now hosting big dog clinics. And that is the most impactful way that we can fix what's going on in our shelters. We all know that our shelters are filled with Huskies, Shepherds, and pit bulls. So we were very excited to add that to what we do this year.
When you think about the time period of what it looks like to spay and neuter a cat, it averages about five to seven minutes. A big dog is probably 20 minutes or longer based on pre-treatment and post-treatment.
Now, we're going to walk you through our feral cat vertical. We started in October of 2020 with our first clinic with your funding for unincorporated residents. And since then, we have fixed a whopping 3,099 feral cats throughout Monterey County. Would like to walk you through what it takes to build a feral cat clinic. We're very lucky that we've built a dedicated team of volunteers that helps us with this process. So if you look up at this picture in the upper right, this is your typical feral cat colony in the unincorporated areas. What you see here is probably somebody started out with two cats, maybe a year to two years ago, and now they have 15 to 20 cats. We're lucky to work with some volume trappers that volunteer with the rescues, Heading Home Rescue, Our Neighborhood Pet Project, and Carmen's TNR. And they help us trap these large properties. We also work with the property owners themselves and train them how to trap and solve their own problem. We loan them the supplies. We don't rent it. It's for free. And we give them free appointments. And so the next slide that you see is all of the cats showing up to the clinic to be fixed. And then the slide on the left is all of our volunteers. It takes about three to six volunteers every single cat clinic to run it. And the last slide that you see over here is the day after surgery, all the cats being released back to their property. This is such an impactful program for our county. We are literally ground zero for keeping cats and kittens out of the animal shelter. This year so far, we fixed 320 feral cats for unincorporated residents. And we have more clinics coming up. In fact, our next one is next Wednesday at The Grange. So we have fixed over 3,099 feral cats in Monterey County since 2020. Can you imagine if 50% of these cats had kittens?
So again, in addition to your funding, we also ask for the community to sponsor these feral cat clinics. So we do have a lot of those clinics that do get funded that way. But again, 3,000 ferals fixed in Monterey County, and if 50% of those had kittens, where would we be? This slide here just kind of demonstrates the impact of not having spay and neuter. You see on the left what happens if a cat starts to have kittens, and those kittens have kittens, and those kittens have kittens. And the same on the right. If two dogs start to have puppies, what that looks like. In the United States, over 1 million animals are euthanized every year. And our goal is to help prevent animal overpopulation. We know that the capture, impoundment, and euthanasia of unwanted animals costs a lot of money to our communities. What we see here are posts and texts from people who have reported to us of animals being sold in our county. They lead to unwanted animals, and we're just trying to not turn a blind eye to that, and we're utilizing spay-neuter services for that. Here you can see the Great Dane that someone in Monterey County, on the Monterey County post, was posted. So this is kind of what can happen if we do have too many animals. Here's just a quick snapshot of one week of intake at Hitchcock Shelter. This was 72 animals during the month of January. We just did a snapshot of a week. If you look at the average number of animals that are taken into the shelter, it's about 361 per month. And we just ask, you know, how many of those make it out of the shelter?
So our budget request for SNIP Bus, we're asking for six clinics a month, 72 clinics for the year, 288,000. Each clinic costs $4,000. We would like this to be split between Monterey County to help unincorporated residents and then also City of Salinas. We will be asking the City of Salinas to support this also, as City of Salinas is the number-one intake with over 60% of the animals coming from Salinas. They're the number-one intake at Hitchcock Road, and they're also the number-one intake for our local SPCA.
Here's a sneak peek of some things we're working on. We're doing a fundraiser, Pause for a Cause, a golf tournament on May 20. The funds that we raised for that will be utilized for clinics in East Salinas. We're also hosting a pop-up resale shop that the funds for that from May 11 are going to go towards the SNIP in Need program. In addition to that, we're working with the City of Seaside. They are the first city in Monterey County that funded the SNIP Bus. They've noticed that utilizing spay and neuter services has reduced the intake at their local SPCA. So we've gone from 11% intake to about 9%. In addition to that, we're working with our ACO on some partnerships to do spay and neuter and breeding. And what that's going to do for him is anytime he goes to a property and he notices that, you know, the pets are in need, he can actually ask them to get them spayed and neutered. Last year, we euthanized more than 1,400 animals at our local shelter. This is why we can't take our foot off the gas when it comes to spay and neuter. The only way to stop animals from entering our shelter like macaroni and being euthanized is to prevent them from being born in the first place. Let's continue to stop the cycle completely by supporting spay and neuter services in our county. We want to thank all of you for supporting spay and neuter and SNIP. Our goal is to end animal overpopulation in our county and statewide. Today, I feel the burden of the animals on my shoulder to deliver the message to you, the importance of spay and neuter services. Overall, spaying and neutering contributes to building a more sustainable and harmonious communities and addressing animal overpopulation. It's associated with environmental and social challenges, and we thank all of you for being innovative, proactive leaders for Monterey County. Seventy thousand animals have been snipped in California since we started in 2016. And I'm very proud that Monterey County has been proactive to ensure that we offer spay and neuter services here in our county. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from any of the board members? Supervisor Lopez?
Just a math question. Looking back to the slide with the budget ask, maybe I was reading it wrong, but I think there was lack of clarity around, are we being asked for that amount? If you break down 192 and 140, if you add 192 and 144, that's more than 288. I'm just curious, what's the...
Our goal, which we didn't mention, is that we are also going to be going to the City of Salinas and asking them for additional funding. The City of Salinas is actually the number-one intake for the SPCA and also for Monterey County. So our expectation is that Salinas should step up in addition to the funds that Monterey County is offering to handle the animal overpopulation in the city. So that's why you see what our goal, our ultimate goal is the 288, and that is part of that JPA funding request. But then we're going to ask for additional clinics from the City of Salinas. And that will be where those funds come from.
If I can elaborate on that. So theoretically, it would break down to three and three clinics, right? Three for unincorporated, three for City of Salinas. Where we got the line on the bottom, four times 12 for the county, because ideally, if we were able to do two in South County and two in North County with your guys' funding, that would enable us to do a double day in Greenfield or Solidad, where we were able to do domestic pets in the morning and ferals in the afternoon. And then we could repeat the same thing for North County. And we could do domestic pets in the morning and feral cats in the afternoon. But that would be four clinics a month and not three for county. So that's sort of the ideal ask.
So is the budget ask 288, though, or is it 192?
For Board of Supervisors, ideally, the 192.
Thank you.
Any other, yes, Supervisor Askew?
Yeah, thank you. So for folks who would otherwise be getting their animals spayed or neutered, where would they normally go? What are the other options for spay-neuter?
So I feel like we are lucky at this point that we do have a lot of resources available for low-cost spay-neuter. So SPCA has their program located out on Highway 68. Also, Animal Friends Rescue Project that's located in Ryan Ranch has really stepped up in the last year and starting to offer services for feral cats and some owned animals also. And they could go also to their local vet, although we understand that that's very impacted, and it's hard to get a spay-neuter appointment. It's also extremely expensive, and that's the importance of our program. Not everybody can afford the 500 to 1,500 that you could potentially pay for up to a big dog.
Got it. Okay. Well, this is my question. I really appreciate the presentation. I think that the outreach is important. I remember as a kid seeing you had the pyramid chart of cat reproduction, how like one cat unspayed can produce just, you know, thousands of cats within this period of relatively short period of time. That was an impactful thing for me to see as a kid and really like left an impression. So seeing that again, I was like, oh, yeah, there we go. So I thank you for all of the outreach work you're doing in education. And the other one that I didn't know about, but that I thought was as exciting, is the Volantine Program. And I was just wondering if you also had opportunities for youth who are interested in going into an animal care career to be involved with the actual SNIP, the actual clinics?
Yes, we have had some, under 18, they have to volunteer with their parent. But yes, we have had folks volunteering for the feral cat clinics. And in fact, yesterday, I had a young lady, she's an 18-year-old college student, and she volunteered with us at a City of Salinas feral cat clinic.
Nice. Good to know. Thank you.
I just wanted also just to say on behalf of the folks and families in Salinas, as you say, the greatest need is there. We've seen the most animals coming to our city here. And so I want to just commend these efforts and all of you who are volunteers, who raise money, who coordinate with other community volunteers. It's really some amazing work that should really be commended. And I like that slide that you put on one week worth of animals that came to the Hitchcock Center, 72 animals. You have all their little faces there. And those of us who are pet lovers, dog lovers, we all understand that these little animals are like our family. And so when you see 72 who were sent to the shelter for whatever reasons, it's really heartbreaking to see that. And it really stresses the importance of why this work is important, getting animals neutered, prevent animals from being euthanized. Nobody wants to see that. It's really, it is heartbreaking, seeing animals or hearing the stories of animals. And I know that's on the mental health of those workers, doing that kind of work, taking that home. Nobody wants to carry that with them. So if we could do these preventative measures by supporting these efforts, I think it's important for us to be part of the work, along with other local governments, all chipping in to fund so that you're able to do more of these clinics. So I just wanted to really thank you, commend you for being community heroes for these little animals in our communities. Thank you.
Well, I can only say thank you as well. I have seen firsthand the work that you do, and I know some of the areas, like around the post office in Pebble Beach, that has a large feral community. And I think that the work that you do in places like that or, you know, some of the other things, the pictures that we've seen, just very appreciated. It really is calling. And you guys heard the call, and you responded, and I thank you very much for that. I remember when the idea first came forward, and you guys came to, and Melanie, right? Yeah, came to town, she came to my office. And I've got my SNIP hat, but unfortunately, it's sitting on a bookshelf on 1200 Aguahito, so I couldn't wear it today. But when she was explaining it to me, it just made so much sense. You know, it really did. And I was so very thankful that it has gone so well. That's been about eight years, I think, now, seven or eight years. And it really depends a lot on the volunteers that you have. Volunteers depend on the leadership, and that's really where you guys come in. So thanks very much for being able to do what you're doing. It makes a big difference in the well-being of people in our community. Thank you.
And I want to thank you as well. Out in North County, there's a very active animal welfare group of people. And I know you all kind of work together a little bit and know each other, sometimes doing different projects. But I know SNIP and, you know, all the activities that are being done out there, widespread support among the community. Just, people realize the good that's being done there, the needs that are being filled that aren't being filled in other ways privately, that aren't being filled by public monies, either from the City of Salinas or from the county. So it's, and I know you've had, as I think Supervisor Adams alluded to here, some long-term funding that's been going on here, and the impact, I think, is, has been noticeable. The numbers that you presented pretty much specify that. And so, you know, I, again, I want to, I want to express, you know, my gratitude for the work that you've done, because it's, I hear almost, you know, universal support for the program. With that, I think, yes, Supervisor Lopez?
Sorry, I just wanted questions earlier. I didn't know we were going comments. If we're going comments, I want to thank you guys for everything that you've done. It's been a great partnership. I've really enjoyed working with you guys to open up new spaces in South County, to build relationships, to make sure that the community has access to the service you're providing. I know that for us, being in a far-flung corner of the county, often we don't feel seen or heard, but with us, we do feel seen and heard with SNIP because you're there, whether it's San Lucas, San Ardo, Bradley, you showed up. And for our families, that means the world. I think that's what it takes. It takes bringing government, resources, opportunity to people. And SNIP has done that. And you've done that not by stepping on toes, by collaborating with existing nonprofits who've stepped into a space where, as we all know, recently, the, one of the only vets in Southern Monterey County, we really only have two, and one of the two just shut down after 95 years of service. I know they branded it as a merging with somebody, but it meant the resources were leaving South County, and our residents were being asked to commute to Salinas to bring the pets here for service. Those are real barriers for our families. We know what those barriers are, and transportation is one of them. So when you get on the bus and you take it south to the communities, that access is what we need. You've been there, you've been a partner to us, and I think you've leveraged the resource we've put at your disposal well to make sure that it happens in a way that has real impact and lasting impact in our communities. So I want to thank you for what you've done so far. As we look forward, we know it's a tougher budget year. But for me, I also know what tough budget years mean for families, right? If our budget's tough, it means family budgets are tough, and those decisions that get made are, do we pay for that $500 appointment or not? And it makes it almost more imperative to invest in this space and time in those communities who don't have access to that resource, because that's when that critical decision will be made, which often, as I've seen too many times, having to pick up those animals means that that family's going to drive to the edge of town and leave them, often at my house, because I'm right on the edge of town, and I have to load them up and drive them to the shelter myself. So thank you for the work you're doing, and I look forward to looking at that ask as part of the larger budget piece. But thank you for the work you've done to this point. It means the world to us.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to take it out for a public comment. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to speak on this matter? Yes. Good afternoon. You have two minutes.
Two? Oh, I thought I had three.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, two is what we hold to here.
Can I read really fast?
You can reduce from three to two.
I'm going to read really fast. "Thank you, supervisors, for allowing us the opportunity to ask you for funding, and to thank you for supporting the solution to reduce animal suffering. My name is Kelly Susan. I'm a 32-year resident of North Monterey County. I'm a business owner, and I conduct much of my business in South Santa Cruz County, specifically Watsonville. The importance of bringing low and no-cost spay and neuter into communities like Baharo, a town I pastor daily, is the difference between those animals seeing a lifetime of litters or a life of blissful retirement as somebody's lap companion. I help run the feral cat TNR program for Santa Cruz County's project purr. I often have to tell North Monterey County residents who request our program that their neighborhood cat that keeps having babies sadly lives a few feet out of my jurisdiction to offer them services. Thanks to your funding, I can refer them to SNIP. This prevents them from having to take time off work to drive all the way to Monterey and back, and then back again, taking, you know, maybe money out of their grocery budget to make those kinds of decisions. So thank you. High-volume spay and neuter, the method practiced by SNIP, has brought such an incredible return on my tax dollars. Outsourcing these surgeries is far better value for our communities than the capture, impoundment, shelter, and eventual euthanasia, and it's definitely much more humane. That magic number is $500. That's the estimated cost of sheltering, bringing an animal and euthanizing to the end, $500. Our $100 to $200 ask for an animal's spay is such a better investment, not to mention it's a one-time deal versus these animals. They don't just have one baby, and they don't just get pregnant once. Doing business with SNIP is good for the county's fiscal health. It's been good for this county's underserved communities, and it brings honor to our neighbors who don't have access to conventional services. It offers a humane solution to animal suffering due to crisis level overpopulation. Having shelter directors, ACOs, and elected officials remember that animals have been granted the right to humane treatment by state mandate is the first line of defense. They must read understanding, accept the current accepted data, and they must give up the status quo of antiquated beliefs..."
Your time is up.
"...and practices."
But you did, you did really, really good.
Thank you very much. I have a printout, if any of you guys want this. It also has information for me and my nonprofit, Spay and Neuter Education. So I'll leave these here. It's all.
If you can present it, maybe, Diego, could you take that for? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, another comment.
So good afternoon, supervisors. And I just wanted to say on the other side of the coin, some of us, I myself have had some cat pets that have disappeared from my home and neighborhood. And I didn't know where they were, they just disappeared forever. And so I think it would be good for people, for you, if you're picking up pets, especially in neighborhoods, not to just assume they're feral cats and maybe take some pictures of them, because I took pictures of three cats and posted it on my fence when they disappeared, and they never came back. So that can be heartbreaking for people who are pet owners if you kidnap their pets.
Thank you. I believe the cats are returned to where they were picked up. Are there any other comments in the chambers? Do we have anybody online?
Tina Nieto?
Yes, Sheriff.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to congratulate SNIP for what a great job that they're doing in our county. I am a true believer of the spay and neuter. And after getting educated by the members of SNIP, I think this is an economical way to control our pet population. And pets are really important to me. I am a proud owner of three rescued dogs, including one German Shepherd rescue. So I'm very happy that they're doing big dogs, because I know my German Shepherd, and I've had Huskies before. Those breeds are really misunderstood. People get them. They are dogs that need special handlers, because they're a very strong-willed type of pets, but people just, they look cool, let me get them, and then they get abandoned. And it is a problem in our county. So I just wanted to say that this is a good way to spend our budget dollars, because on the other hand, when we have problems with pets, I know that animal control gets called, but also the sheriff's resources end up getting involved in these issues when it comes to irresponsible pet ownerships, because there are laws that are being broken. And so we're using resources, and deputies are a very expensive resource. And here is a good way to spend our dollars to maybe save some of our deputies' hours so we can be working on other issues within our community. So congratulations, SNIP. You guys are doing a great job, and I just want to thank all the volunteers and all the Volantines, and also for the wellness dog that you guys helped get to the sheriff's department.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff. Anybody else? Nobody else online? All right, well, this is just a presentation, so if there's any other comments here from the board, and I see none, you know, we close public comment. And thank you for your presentation, and we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next item up is number 14, the Caltrans Garapata Bridge Bridge Rail Replacement Project on Highway One. Phil Angelo, Melanie Boretti will be presenting this.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. One minute while I get my presentation set up. And so I'm joined today by Acting Chief of Planning, Melanie Boretti. So as an overview, the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, are proposing to remove and replace the railings on the Garapata Creek Bridge, which is one of seven historic concrete spandrel bridges known as the Big Sur Arches. Caltrans have certified an EIR to replace six out of the seven railings on these historic bridges, but only the Garapata Creek Bridge Rail Replacement Project has been submitted for permitting at this time. Here are the existing rails from the bridge deck and the proposed 86H. There are also additional alternatives of this that have a wider opening with a metal element that are attached to the staff report. Projects have been reviewed by a number of advisory bodies, including Caltrans Aesthetic Design Advisory Committee, the Big Sur Land Use Advisory Committee, the county's Historic Resources Review Board, and the county's Historic Resources Review Board. On March 8, the Planning Commission denied the project, finding it inconsistent with the aesthetic and visual access policies of the Big Sur Land Use Plan. On December 6, 2023, the Board of Supervisors adopted a motion of intent to deny the project and directed staff to return with a resolution with findings and evidence for denial. The project is subject to the policies of the Big Sur Land Use Plan, and they're implementing regulations in the Monterey County Coastal Implementation Plan, both of which are part of the county's Certified Local Coastal Program. Once a jurisdiction has a Certified Local Coastal Program, they assume coastal development permitting that applies equally to private landowners, local agencies, and state agencies. And the Big Sur Land Use Plan is highly ambitious. In the Administration, Chapter 7.1, it states, "The county shall work with other levels of government to secure their compliance with the plan. Conformance by all public agencies, including federal agencies, is needed for this plan to work as intended." The Big Sur Land Use Plan has several overlapping policies that protect scenic resources, Highway One, and visual access, which state that the county shall protect Highway One's primary function as a scenic and recreational route, and indicate that a principal objective of maintenance and construction activities on the highway shall be to maintain the highest possible standard of visual beauty and interest. The Certified EIR for the project states that both the individual bridge rail replacement and the program for all six bridges would result in a loss of scenic vistas, substantial reduction in visual quality character, and loss of visible access to coastal scenic resources, and that the historic bridges are primary contributors to the scenic vistas throughout the area. So I guess, high-level, substantial adverse effects to scenic resources on primary contributors to the scenic character of the area is not consistent with the highest possible standard of visual beauty and interest. While each bridge is individually eligible for National Register listing, the statement of significance for the Big Sur Arches states, "The bridges are best understood as a group, however unified by a common roadway, a common setting, and a single design principle. These are the Big Sur Arches, which together comprise one of the most beautiful public works projects in the United States. Railings are a character-defining feature of the Garapata Creek Bridge. Statement of significance continues, 'The thinness of the arch rings, columns, and railings make the structures light and transparent, lessening the visual obstruction of the seascapes. The project would entail removing a character-defining feature, diminishing its workmanship, design, and feeling.' As the project would adversely affect this individual bridge, which is one of a set, it wouldn't be consistent with the Big Sur Land Use Plan policies protecting scenic resources. In summary, these state that it's the policy of the county to protect and maintain cultural heritage and man-made resources, and that development shall, where appropriate, protect significant cultural landmarks." This is kind of a simplified breakdown of the coastal permit process. The starting point is, along with other findings that need to be made, is the project consistent with the local coastal program? If it's not, then typically that would result in a denial. But there is a pressure-release valve in case that would result in a property being completely undeveloped by the strict application of those policies. In order to grant an exception, a number of different criteria need to be met, including that the proposed project is the least environmentally damaging alternative to the project. This is where the project has been stuck. Caltrans have put a significant amount of time and effort into developing the 86H rail, soliciting input from the public on its design and making aesthetic modifications to it. But the county and interested parties have requested that a range of alternatives to reduce impacts to visual and historical resources be analyzed, which could include various exceptions to bridge rail crash testing or geometric safety standards, and/or reducing the speed of the highway at the location to give broader latitude to the applicable standards. The finding of adverse effect, which is attached to the historic report for the project, kind of best summarizes the alternative analysis that's been undertaken for this project. To be considered viable, projects must, project alternatives must address the project's purpose and need. The purpose of the project is to replace existing concrete baluster bridge rail in approach with a rail that meets current traffic safety standards. And so the environmental analysis reliance on meeting standards has limited the conversation on the project to adherence to current standards rather than what would best improve safety and maintain our visual and cultural resources on the bridge. Through the project review, there's been a considerable amount of back and forth as to whether exceptions to bridge rail design standards are even possible. In the applicant's latest submittal, they've stated that they are, but that the state bridge engineer would not grant such an exception. There are several publications throughout the country that address historic bridge preservation, many of which have explicit discussions of design exceptions. In 2007, the National Cooperative Highway Research Program released a rehabilitation guide. In 2012, they did a follow-up report on the different practices that have been done around the country. And in 2020, the American Association of State and Highway Transportation Officials released a Historic Bridge Preservation Guide that has explicit discussion of exceptions and these kinds of alternatives. The 2012 Lessons Learned Document states that Vermont, Minnesota, Oregon, Virginia, and Texas, and Indiana have all used alternative standards or design exceptions for historic bridge rehabilitations in their design process at some capacity. There was a wide range of responses, with Minnesota saying that design exceptions have been key in historic bridge rehabilitation, while Texas only allowing use of alternative standards on low-volume roads. Individual examples of projects where exceptions have been utilized are difficult to find, and we have limited information on them. But the Chensworth Creek Bridge in Oregon developed a rail that was not crash-tested, but designed to comply with the kind of structural loading requirements of a test level four bridge. And then Bridge 6679 in Houston County in Minnesota reduced the test level of the rail based on the expected level of service from the road from a number four to a number three in order to best mimic their modernist concrete bi-rail. The applicant's letter from their Division of Maintenance Department goes on to say that bridge rails are a safety feature, so replacement with a new compliant rail is the only repair strategy. This is inconsistent with the 2020 Historic Bridge Preservation Guide that states that exceptions for rail repair can be granted under certain circumstances, and there are some different considerations on when that would be appropriate. We also reached out to our listserv with certified local governments through the State Parks Historic Preservation Program. And a former environmental planner from District 11, Martin Rosen, reached out and said that they had a similar historic district in Balboa Park over the 163, where they had preserved the existing bridge rails along their historic bridges rather than replace them. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to reach Mr. Rosen for individual bridges, but this is Cabrillo Bridge in San Diego, along that corridor that was constructed in 1915. One of the alternatives that's been discussed in the permit review process was reducing the speed. The bridge railing design is driven by the operating speed of motorists on the freeway, which is how they're actually driving. Higher speeds generally require beefier railings that are less in line with the historic and visual qualities of the bridge railing. And lower speeds would allow consideration of a reduced test level railing, like the Texas C-411, which was here and was identified as the preferred alternative when the county's Historic Resources Review Board responded to Section 106 consultation comments during the environmental review process. And this would only allow a six-inch wide opening, but there are other elements. I won't get into the granular details on that. However, in this case, a speed study was conducted, and the operating speed of drivers is 58 miles an hour at this bridge. So Caltrans has the ability to reduce the speed level there to 55 miles an hour, but the California Vehicle Code wouldn't allow them to reduce it any further than that. The purpose of the speed study, however, is to establish typical operating conditions along the roadway. If the study was conducted in inclement weather, which may have affected its outcome, and there was no report or analysis on whether any kind of traffic calming measures would meaningfully reduce the speed and could result in more flexibility on the bridge rail design. And so then, kind of concluding, these are all examples of individual types of exceptions or alternatives that could be considered. There may be some combination, for example, if they reduce the speed as much as feasible and then considered using kind of one of the high-strength Oregon stealth rails. But ultimately, those kind of analyses would need to have tech. Those kind of alternatives would need to have supporting technical analysis by the project proponent. Therefore, staff recommend that the Board of Supervisors find that denial of the project is statutorily exempt from CEQA and deny the planning, the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision and the combined development permit for the project. Staff did receive two public comments, one from Martha Deal and one from Angus Jeffers, after distribution of the staff report. And both of those, I believe, have been circulated for your review. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Are there any comments for staff? Let me ask, we have some Caltrans representatives here. Are you wanting some time for a presentation as well?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, first, well, first, any questions from the board for our staff on this?
I think I'll wait until we hear from Caltrans and then have a discussion.
So if, yeah, if you would like to come up and do your presentation, I can, it's kind of a complicated issue. I'll give you, give you 10 minutes for the presentation.
Maybe a little more.
If you really need more, Ben, that's okay.
Yeah, you can come in the box.
Okay.
Swap out for a minute.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity, Supervisors.
Alex, can you please share monitor or write?
So I'm Pete Hendricks. I'm the District 5 Caltrans Traffic Division Chief. I have here helping me John Alenick, Senior Planner with Caltrans District 5. We're here to, to make a pitch for this project, because it's a highway safety project. You can go to the next slide. We want to keep people on the road. We want to keep people safe, and we want this bridge and highway to be reliable. We also want to have this bridge rail be representative of the community. We want to respect the environment. We do want to integrate the historical architectural aspects of the old rail in whatever design we come up with. We want that design to be vetted by the locals, and we, we have history of sitting in and working with the locals to come up with solutions. Go to the next slide, please. So what we have now is, we, we all recognize that the existing bridge rail is decaying. It cannot be repaired. Our structural maintenance and investigation teams have evaluated this rail. It is deteriorated and beyond repair. We cannot repair in kind. We would like to repair in kind. That would be a lot less expensive. That would be, that would appease the community. From a traffic safety standpoint, this, the existing rail is not crash-tested. We don't know what, how it would perform in a crash. And so with that in mind, that leads us into needing to replace this rail, which is what the recommendation is. Go to the next slide, please. And we recognize that, with that said, when we have a modern bridge rail, it has to accommodate the modern characteristics of vehicles today. They're heavier. A lot of them have larger batteries and engines, higher centers of gravity. So these, these different characteristics are things that we need to account for in a safe bridge rail design. And so that is what Caltrans has done with their design process that's consistent with the bridge design specifications, which is a standard practice. And there are opportunities to provide input from the community into the design. And go to the next slide. The outcomes of failing to have a bridge rail that has adequate crash protections is what we see here. And next slide. And then we can fall into the environmental outcomes and fatal outcomes, like we see here, where this truck hit that other vehicle, and the truck driver died here. We want to try to prevent this. Next slide. So with that said, we, we came up with a concept in, where we try to accommodate the needs of the community, the desires of the community, the, the local coastal plan that takes into account visual access to the furthest extent possible. And that is what we thought we came up with, with a six-inch opening that we see here in a rendering. Next slide. And so with that said, the aspects of this bridge rail that cannot change is the shape of the rail. So if we lower the speed, it will not change the, this safe shape, the safety shape of the bridge rail that we're proposing in the 86H section above. But what can change is what happens in those annular spaces in the middle. The existing bridge rail, it will not pass any kind of crash testing requirements. It's not, it would not be a safe bridge rail to redesign and redeploy out here. Next slide. So this is a rendering of Alternative 1 of the 11 different types of bridge rail designs that Caltrans Structures came up with. And next slide. So with that said, we took the input from the community after the hearing with the Planning Commission, and we redeveloped different ideas based on the input from the community and came up with a 10-inch opening so long as there was an element in the middle to prevent any, any kind of limbs from going inside this 10-inch opening, which is part of modern bridge design requirements. And so there, there are no exceptions to this mash testing requirement, this safe bridge rail design requirement. We cannot repair in kind, to reiterate that. We cannot get an exception. The state bridge engineer has echoed that, that there is no exception process to maintain the shape and exact style of the existing rail. And so that's why we put 11 different options here in front of you that have been custom-designed with the needs expressed by the community in mind. We believe that we've achieved that. And so, next slide. Another aspect that has come up in, in the course of this project's development is whether or not there have been crashes. And so from a big-picture perspective, we want to, we want to look at what's happening on Coast Highway One. And we want to recognize that in a 10-year period, there were approximately 920 crashes. And of that, 24 people killed, 532 people injured. At Caltrans, that's unacceptable. At Caltrans, that's unacceptable. That's not a statistic we want to keep. So if there's an opportunity that we can make the outcome safer for people going over this bridge, the visitors, the daily travelers, the businesses getting served with trucks delivering goods, we want to make that happen. That's our job at Caltrans, to help people get from one place to the other safely and reliably. Next slide. And so one of the other concerns that's been brought up is whether or not there have been crashes at the actual bridge. And this is slightly different than what was seen in the staff report because it's a different date range, but it's still the same point, which is there are crashes happening on the bridge. And whether people are drunk, whether they're sober, our goal and aim is to keep people on the road. Next slide. We have support by CHP and State Parks. And so with that said, I also want to be clear with the exception process that's been stated on a few different occasions, there will be no exceptions to the opening size. There will be no exceptions to allow the existing bridge rail to stay in kind. So that leads us to say, next slide, or previous slide. What we see with the existing bridge rail today, this may remain for some time should there be a failure to obtain a coastal development permit. Preliminary rumblings are that the Coastal Commission will not hear our appeal. And I don't know the details of that, but that is a little troubling. So with that said, Caltrans would need to take next steps should there be a failure to obtain a coastal development permit to replace this bridge rail. And so those options will be on the table, and will involve multiple people to come to a decision on, but it will be something that we decide internally as a matter of operations and safety for the traveling public when that time comes. So at that, I think I will call it a close. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This is an action item, so first we'll go to the board for questions, and then we can go to the public and come back for comments. Are there any questions from either Caltrans representatives or to our staff or any particular? No? Well, let's go off to the public then at that point. Thank you for the presentation. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to speak on this matter? Yes, please come forward. You have two minutes.
Chairman Glenn Church and members of the board, my name is Glenn Guries. My family owns a property on the east side of the bridge. There's two separate parcels that are in the families. We've had it since the '60s. And I know this appears to be quite a dilemma. Bridge doesn't look good with the railing that's going across it now. And the staff report was very good, and I agree with the staff report, and I understand the dilemma down with Caltrans, you know, having the difficulty of safety. So my family's position is, you know, we'd like the historic character of the bridge to stay. We like the viewing because having the open slats is important to the public, but it's also a safety feature because people do stop. And if they can't see, in fact, you know, we have the property on the east side of the bridge and both sides, and about 300 yards of Garapata Creek going through the property, that people climb the fences, climb the, you know, break the gates, and they're trying to take pictures there. Certainly, in the future, it would be great if there was some type of viewing deck for the public because they're constantly on the bridge. It's a very, you know, obviously a very tight bridge, and so it's not really a safe place for all of the public to get out. And Garapata Beach is just packed with cars, and people are walking to the bridge, you know, all day long and taking pictures. And there's just, you know, the rock formations there, the tide pool that's there, it's just, and the ocean in the background, it's just very picturesque, and the coastline's like Disneyland, but thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ding ding. Anybody else in the chambers that would like to speak on this matter? Do we have anybody online?
Yes, Christina McGinnis.
Yes, Ms. McGinnis, you have two minutes.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chair Church and supervisors. My name is Christina McGinnis, and I'm speaking today on behalf of Keep Big Sur Wild, a nonprofit organization dedicated to preserving the unspoiled, rustic character and natural beauty of the Big Sur coast and the protection of the public's access to the scenic highway. As you know, the Big Sur Land Use Plan is the guiding document that continues to be the gold standard for the preservation of this coast, and our organization formed around the need to preserve and defend the land use plan and its protective policy framework. First off, we'd like to thank staff for returning to the board with findings of denial for this project and for their very, very thorough and thoughtful analysis and presentation. And as the staff report details, the project is inconsistent with the local coastal program and the land use plan. We're very pleased to see that the policies that protect the public's right to visual access of the coast as its primary access have been honored, and we appreciate the acknowledgement of the precedent set with the design of this bridge for the other bridges. I'd just like to take a moment to read something from the late author who submitted a comment letter on behalf of the Big Sur Historical Society on the importance of the historic character of this bridge early on in the process in 2020. She said, "These bridges have been declared eligible for historic designation, not principally for their age, but also for their grace and beauty and the continuity of design along the highway corridor. The design elements carry over to the other features of the highway, such as culvert headings and the parapet walls. The remaining fountains also fit into this same style. I regret that the safety standards keep changing as I know that with each new design goes through extensive and expensive testing, making it difficult to go with anything other than a standard design developed to be generic and fit anywhere. Highway 1 through the Big Sur corridor deserves better, both for its eligibility for historic designation and the byway status." I have to know, but I think her words say it all, and we support staff's recommendation, and thank you for your deliberation on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Martha Deal?
Yes, Martha, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Chair Church and supervisors. I just wanted to say from the very get-go that I really appreciate the work that staff has done. I think it's diligent, and I think it shows that there are alternatives that have not been explored. I personally have been working on this issue with Caltrans, and I raised the issue in 2019 that the design that was proposed was not going to fly and that the best use of taxpayer money, time, and a way to address this emergency expeditiously would be to change course. As we've heard several times, there's a lot of discussion of standards, and what's not being considered is that the standards being used are those for state highways, and Highway 1 doesn't conform to the state highway standards to begin with. I'm particularly shocked and appalled at the attempts of Caltrans to bring forward safety concerns that in fact do not exist. This particular railing design has performed without failure and without anybody going through it, and those pictures were not of these bridges, since 1932 and this bridge and all the other bridges. It works. It's worked through the '50s and '60s in Big Sur when there was Detroit Steel, when there was no speed limits, and where we had people who typically did not always obey the law. I really appreciate the united stand of the supervisors to require this unique highway to be given unique treatment in all of its elements. Caltrans continues to talk about standards. We need to talk about preserving this one-of-a-kind that is famous throughout the world, and I appreciate your help doing that more than I can say. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Walters?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Hello. My name is Jim Walters. I live on Clear Ridge Road. I participated in the meeting last December, and I said something that I was sort of sorry for afterward. I said that Caltrans had been misleading, disingenuous, condescending, and disrespectful. I felt bad after I said that last time, but now I don't feel bad. I feel that coming back and basically repeating the same story, the same non-relevant photos, and refusing to consider repair without evidence that it can't be repaired. I just think that it's not serving anybody very well, and these bridges are incredibly important to the county. One thing that Caltrans has done is to lower the speed limit in Malibu, and I wonder if it would happen well. Purely subjective to Caltrans and not relevant. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trey Crop or Coup?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Church. Can I share my screen? Is that possible?
Don't think so, sorry.
Okay. Well, I had some photos of Garapata Bridge that show that it has been repaired, and the entire middle section behind the guardrail is a complete repair done by Caltrans. It shows, you know, all-new concrete, and so for Caltrans to say that it's not possible to repair these, I don't understand that. I'm also pretty disappointed to hear that Caltrans is willing to say that if the Coastal Commission also does not want to hear this case, that they would just go ahead and do it their way anyway. It's just disingenuous to this community, just and all the tourists that come to Big Sur that enjoy these historic bridges. They mean a lot, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ken Eklund?
Yes, Mr. Eklund, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I am a resident of Garapata Canyon, and I look at that bridge just about every day of my life. I was actually there when the Caltrans engineers took out the geological hammers and made the mess that they showed you on the presentation. It did not look like that until they did that, and I do concur with the previous person that pointed out that it had been repaired. The guardrail that's there right now is quite ugly, but it is providing all the safety that anyone would reasonably expect. So this gives us enough time, whether it could be a decade, to figure out how to come up with a way to preserve the view. That would be the best call. And I'm afraid once it starts, as has been presented by staff, that they change it here, they'll say, oh, it's already done everywhere else. And if you go down the highway, you'll notice there's a hodgepodge of abutments and railings all the way down, and I think this is the most classic design. I urge your board to deny the appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. There are no others, nobody else on Zoom? With that, we'll close public comment, bring it back here to the board. I actually do have one question from the Caltrans presentation. You had mentioned, excuse me, where did that come from? Well, anyway, you mentioned that there were about 10 accidents over the last 10 years, just like an accident a year. I'm wondering how that compares to the other bridges along Big Sur? Do you have that information?
Do you not have that information?
I mean, I, or statewide? I mean, Highway 1's a different scenario. You really can't compare it to bridges on some other places because people stop and look and things like that, but do you, so I'm really trying to make this comparison onto there, but if you don't have that, then...
Hasn't triggered required investigations at the bridge, if that's your question.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Yes, supervisor ask you? Comments here? Yes.
So just to be clear, so I voted with the majority of the board when this came to us for consideration last time. It was clear to me based on the, that wasn't how I intended to vote coming into the meeting, but having heard the conversation and then the dialogue with my colleagues, it was clear to me that there was majority support to deny or to ask for staff to come back with a denial of the appeal. So I, you know, went with our majority board. However, given the additional time to continue researching the issue, talking to residents, talking to other communities who are working on Caltrans projects, hearing more from county staff and Caltrans about the issue, I will be taking a position of support today. It's become clear to me that this really is a traffic safety project that is needed and necessary, and that the current rails in their current condition aren't safe as they are. So remaining at the status quo really isn't an option. The county goes to great lengths to support and to protect the health and safety of residents and visitors in Big Sur. We invest in dedicated ambulance service in that community to protect the health and safety of folks. We are working hard to expand emergency communication capacity in the larger Big Sur area so that folks can have access to health and welfare resources when they need them. And I think we've been lucky to have avoided a serious tragedy due to the current insufficient railings. The more that I have dug into all of this, it's clear to me that the alternative to our approval of the appeal will inevitably cause further degradation to the visibility and the view of the bridges, you know, whether it's the installation of K-rails. I was in another community recently and crossed a bridge that had full K-rails. It was a single lane because of the need to put safe features in place. I don't know that K-rails or reduction to a single lane of travel is what any of us want for our Big Sur, for this bridge, or any of our bridges. And then finally, I'll just say that I, you know, it's not lost on me how much time and energy and resource of our county staff, of Caltrans staff, have gone into thinking about alternatives for how this, for how this project could be done in a way that was respectful of the community. The number of options that have been brought forward and the level of engagement that's been done, I think many other communities would be grateful to have that level of time and attention placed on them. And for the time and attention and resource that have been put into this project, I know that there are many other projects that have been put on the sidelines. So for the sake of good governance and moving critical projects forward throughout this county and beyond, I do vote, intend to vote in support of the appeal or to ask staff to drop, you know, go back to our proposal for approval. So that'll be my comments, and I look forward to the conversation.
Supervisor Leho?
Hello, and next here, next to my colleague, supervisor ask you, first of all, I want to acknowledge the work of our staff and of Caltrans and the community for weighing in. Obviously, this is an important one. A lot of our local residents, especially around that area, by others who just enjoy the beautiful views of those iconic bridges, are rightly concerned about this, and this is our revisit to this. But in the interim, I want to thank Caltrans staff for having the sit-downs, I think with all of us, to answer more questions and go through some of the more details more thoroughly one-on-one. So several concerns since the last time, because I think my vote last time was to have this come back, but try to explore the exception possibility. But the first question for staff would be if the appeal were to be denied, meaning the Planning Commission's denial would stand, what is the next step? And I'm asking this, I know the answer, but I wanted to restate for the public to know, if we were to deny the appeal by Caltrans, it goes to the...
Well, I guess if we would, the appeal were denied, Caltrans would have the opportunity. They could go back and revise, reconsider their environmental documents, submit a new coastal development permit application, or they could appeal the denial of the project to the Coastal Commission, after which they would assume jurisdiction, and it would be up to them.
So it would be a de novo hearing at the Coastal Commission, correct? They make, they hear everything as if it were new, taking into consideration the decisions that were made at the Planning Commission and at the Board of Supervisors, correct? I would assume so.
That is generally correct. There are some... There are some times where they say there's not a significant environmental issue, we don't want to bring it.
Can if they appeal, can they deny hearing it or do they have to set it for a hearing?
I don't know immediately. I can look into that.
But so what I'm getting to is if we decide to deny the appeal, yes, they could revise. And so I'm glad you stated that. That option goes to the Coastal Commission. But then they they theoretically then could decide on one of those options, right? The 10 different alternatives, they could potentially decide to make the decision for the Board of Supervisors.
That is correct. They could pick the preferred 86H with the six inch opening. They could pick any of the other 10 inch wide ones. They could approve a different alternative. Any of those options.
And and a lot of work went into that process and looking at all those plans to meet the state codes and then to try to address some of the community concerns. So I that's why I take it really too hard, because I don't like passing it to someone else to make a decision for us if it does go to an appeal. That's why I wanted more time to explore those options, the exemption potentials. I only wanted to state what I what I heard from Caltrans is I take that with all due seriousness. The rail is in pretty bad shape. The photos show it. There there the review and analysis from the experts show it. You see the photos now, or if somebody goes down there, that rail is blocking, obstructing the views on Garapata already because of its current condition, not of safety those rails were put up. So I get that. And and a lot has rightly changed. Vehicles, the weight has changed, the size have changed since this bridge was originally built. And our electric vehicles are two times the weight of of your standard vehicles. Look at the Ford F-150s, the battery weight for the extended versions are, I think it's like 6, 7,000 pounds. So, I mean, there's I recognize there's some significant changes in the trends in the vehicles that are available on the market and that are being frequent and actually being promoted by state government to acquire. So I get I really want to stress, I get those concerns as well. We have to have a bridge that meets the safety standards. God forbid there ever be a fatality of something going wrong there. So I wanted to really stress that. But where I'm still stuck at is these are beautiful iconic bridges that if they're and I stated this last time, I don't want to act like we're repeating everything from last time. But I think there needs to be clear direction from the board. If it were, it is going to deny the appeal. It needs to be clear on what direction we give, that if this gets appealed to the Coastal Commission, our position should be that our board felt very strongly recognizing the safety standards and wanting to meet prevent injuries or meet the safety standards of our state laws. We strongly believe that this these iconic bridges require an effort, perhaps for the first time in California, to do what other states have done, to try to meet the safety standards, perhaps implement other modifications so that it could keep its beauty, meet the safety standards, and address what the community wants us to achieve. If it if it's possible in Oregon, in Minnesota, Vermont, certainly Garapata and the other bridges that could potentially this could potentially impact. I think this is, I think, a time for this board to say, we think this merits, this case merits us being very clear that we believe an exception should be made as it has been done in other counties. And I and I hear you, our Caltrans staff already, because when we met, they said it's not possible that the engineer, state engineer is going to deny doing any exception. But we need to go down that path to see if that is true or not. Let let a decision be made, made in public, made on the record. But for me, that's where I said this this case, these bridges are so special, so beautiful, so iconic, that what we do in Garapata could very well could impact the other bridges that are are aging, that are going to have the same concerns, if not now, in a few years down the road. I think I think that's where we have to be clear on moving forward here. And I think whatever we say on the records is important. We're creating an administrative record for the Coastal Commission to hear if this is litigated to hear, or if we preferably do something else in terms of going and revising and and actually vetting that exception, whether that is possible for the first time in the state of California. I think this case certainly should merit it. And so that's where I stand. Thank you.
And Chair Church, this is Kelly Donlin from the County Council's office. I wanted to address some of Supervisor Leho's questions. As far as the Coastal Commission appeal, the first question, once an appeal is submitted, is whether there is a substantial issue. And the Coastal Commission looks at that issue, and it's relative to conformance with the LCP or the Coastal Act, public asset access and recreation policies. So the Coastal Commission goes through a question of whether there is a substantial issue and whether they want to take the appeal. If there is, it does go forward to a de novo hearing before the Coastal Commission. And I don't know, I haven't spoken with Coastal Commission staff on this. I don't know if HCD staff has. I haven't heard one way or another whether or not Coastal Commission staff thinks the Commission would take this appeal or not.
So Kelly, if they appeal, it is possible, then could the Coastal Commission say this is an action that we we can decide not to consider?
That is correct. If they find a substantial issue, they could do that.
All right. Thank you.
I I know a representative from Caltrans, you know, you did say the Coastal Commission expressed not an interest in taking this up, if you want to address that particular question.
That is correct. It it basically echoes a statement that was just said, which is they may not take it up.
It may not, but they did not tell you they would not.
We did not get confirmation. We tried clarifying that position.
Okay. That that was all I was speaking on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
But to be clear, that's a that's a decision of the Commission, the Coastal Commission. And they certainly haven't considered this matter. So I think it's conjecture at this point to say one way or another.
Yes, I understand. I just want to get clarification for what I had heard earlier, because I thought it was a little more definitive, your comment earlier, that they would not. Supervisor Adams, do you or Lopez, do you want to?
As you can imagine, I do have some thoughts on this issue. The first thing I want to do, though, is to thank staff primarily and let you know, Phil, I think this is one of the best staff reports I have ever read. It is thorough. It is well thought through. It was just a very impressive and brilliant piece of work. I really thank you for that just very much. Also, Caltrans, yesterday, we spent a good deal of time on the phone together, and I very much appreciated hearing your your approach to this. And as I told you, I would come into this meeting with an open mind and try to come forward with whatever it is that we can do. I was disappointed to hear, however, Pete, that Jimi Hendrix is not your cousin. Other than that, things were, it was a good conversation. So I've had more community engagement on this issue than, you know, hard than probably as close to short term rentals as anything. And I've really been struggling with it, as you can all imagine. I've listened to both sides, and I've tried to determine what's best for the residents. I've weighed the accident crash data, and I have positioned those stats, one accident for every, you know, over a year for 10 years, against the guidelines that we would have to ignore to allow destruction of the guardrails. We would have to ignore the Big Sur land use policy, and we would have to ignore the Coast Highway Management Plan. And we would have to look at ignoring those because we're following the manual for assessing safety hardware, also known as MASH. Many feel that the unique physical environment of Highway 1 in Big Sur warrants special consideration in the design and placement of new highway devices. An exhaustive consideration should be given to the protection of Big Sur's physical visual and historic resources. I'm quoting from my new favorite person, Phil, here. Caltrans staff have attempted to explain the design considerations have been made and other design factors are constrained by highway safety standards, MASH. These two positions remain at odds, and the precedent setting nature of a decision on this project remains a concern. And what a conundrum we now found find ourselves in. As a board, we're going to have to figure out what we want to do and what are we going to do? I reread the the LUAC, the Land Use Advisory Committee, and it's signed by, as she's already been mentioned, Mary Trotter, who is now the godmother of Big Sur. And there were three things that that read that I read that I thought were important. The concern that was issued is the new railing is effectively a wall as a result of the smaller openings resulting in obscuring the view shed. Big Sur is known, and part of the Big Sur experience is the visual beauty. And the suggested change was widen the openings to the original height and width. The second concern, safety versus historic design. Maintain the historic design while providing current safety standards. And then finally, rebuild rather than replace. Rebuild the original design and find a method to meet current safety standards. I actually I concur with Supervisor Lopez, Supervisor Leho. And if other states have been able to do this, we from the great state of California ought to be able to find a way as well. So my goal is to achieve some kind of compromise that takes the residents' concerns into account. I don't believe that Caltrans, and I'm serious when I say this, has the attitude of it's my way or the highway. You've been great to work with. You and I, John, have worked over many different subjects, and we've always been able to come to a a agreement. And I I just seem that it makes sense to me that at this point, we should either go back to the drawing board with a group of perhaps three residents and three people from Caltrans, be prepared to come back to this board by April 30 or May 7 with some sort of an agreement that is a solution to the problem that we have. I think Mary Trotter's comments are absolutely right. I do believe that there is a way for us to be able to come forward with some kind of a of a compromise. I know you're going to say, oh, we've looked at everything, there's no way that we can do it. But to me, it just seems like there is, that we haven't been able to try everything. And my hope is that we would be able to find three residents that would be that would share the same feeling and the same emotion, the same sentiment, and the same passion that I do on behalf of all of the residents, to be able to come up with a solution. This is just, it is so critical, because I think of the film, you know, Big Little Lies. This is District 5 relies on things like entertainment and hospitality and being able to have that beautiful coastal scenery. These bridges are a part of that, and I'm not willing to let that go. We've got to find a way to be able to make this work. So my hope is that we would that you would agree, and this board would agree, to give it another chance, to appoint three people, and I will be happy to name those three people. And you guys appoint three people and see if we can't sit down and meet over the next month, month and a half, and come back with some additional alternatives. I think obviously beyond that, I would have to listen to my constituents, which I don't mind doing, and support the staff recommendations to deny the Caltrans coastal development permit application. My hope is that we would be able to find a solution, though, and that we would be able to come back and be on find ourselves in a situation that other states around the state of the country would look at us and say, they were able to do it. Look, look at the result. So those, that's what I'm feeling. Thank you.
Supervisor Lopez?
Yeah, you know, I like that recommendation. I think the piece that is at the core of the issue for me is that this will be a change to the face of an iconic region in California. And I want to believe that there is a solution. And I I in my mind, I feel like I I know what I would do if I was designing it, right? And I think I pitched that to the folks at Caltrans on our call. But it's not my decision to make in the sense that the voice needs to come from community and be supported. And I think that the recommendation you made of appointing three folks from your community to help guide what that design or compromise may exist that can meet everybody's expectations is the right way to approach this. I get that it's been a delay, and I think this is probably the sixth time I've received this presentation between the different iterations and meetings. So, you know, I if I see one more opening with a little bar through it or a mesh net, you know, yeah, I'm getting to my end on it. But I know that for me, there there is an approach that I think would work, but it has to come from community means be supported from community in order to work. I agree with the comments made by Supervisor Leho that if we do not find a solution, we will be scarring, you know, an iconic face. I believe that. And I hear that from you, Mary, and I heard that agreement on that statement, that if other areas can figure out solutions, we should be able to as well. These bridges feel like family members to people who live in Big Sur. They just do. A lot of folks who talk about them, talk about them like they are not the Jimi Hendrix extension of the family, but somebody much closer than that. And so as I look for solutions, I think the one recommended by Mary, I'd be happy to be a second if that is your motion at this point, given concurrence from County Council, that there is an opportunity to take that approach. But I think that that is, I think that's the best possible first solution for us at this point, to hopefully come back with a compromise that works for everybody with community support.
Thank you.
If I may, Chair, I would suggest that you could vote to form a working group appointed by Supervisor Adams. I would suggest that maybe one person from planning also be part of that working group.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to, you know, just extend my thanks to these as a community development staff here in the county, Caltrans. I I know all of you have worked hard on this, and there really are two sides to a coin onto this. You know, one side here is the historic beauty of this bridge. The other side is the safety. And I, you know, I know everybody has their own particular leanings onto there. And it's, you know, for no one is this an easy choice onto here. You know, but but to me, it's it also becomes, we have a community that is so strong in its feelings is is really significant. And the community needs to have needs, you know, some way, maybe as proposed here or some other way, how it as it's come forth to us here, as their needs, their wants, their vision for their their community is pretty significant. Big Sur is not any ordinary landscape. Highway 1 is not any ordinary highway. It's it's exceptional in in many, many ways. And while I understand in Cal in the state of California, with Caltrans, we don't have an exception to any of these policies, I don't think any government policy, it just doesn't have room for an exception, is a good policy. There are exceptions made for a lot of historical buildings, a lot of historical landmarks that, you know, that we try to work in whatever we can on on modern needs, modern designs, safety issues, but they don't always fit around in there together. So, you know, I there's got to be a median here somewhere. And I think a lot, you know, a lot of us on the board here are really trying to find that that median here between preserving what is something that's history and creating something which is safe. Supervisor Leho referred to to some some states outside of California that have done I, you know, would be, you know, supportive of if this is a motion that Supervisor Adams is making is, you know, just trying to find whatever we can onto here. If this has to go to the Coastal Commission, eventually it has to go to there. But I I just believe we can find a way into here somehow. And I'm, again, I'm just looking at the state. The state doesn't have any exception in a state as big as this, in a state as with the rich history that it has. To look at something that that Big Sur, I think is one of the commuters made a comment earlier, that this that the highway itself isn't isn't really constructive for safety in itself, with all the slides that happen every year. This is there's with the twists and the turns, it's the narrowness of it. It's a it's a feat to drive on in itself. So I, you know, you know, again, would be supportive of really whatever direction we go onto here. And if that's a motion, you know, from from you Supervisor Adams. And if that's a motion, you know, from you Supervisor Adams, we bring that up, and I know Supervisor Lopez said you would second.
Thank you. Yes, it would be following the direction of our County Council.
And then following the direction of County Council. So I would, you know, just suggesting to there that, you know, when we talk about membership, you said three people with the community, three people from Caltrans, maybe one person then from Housing and Community Development, so it would be a seven, not a six?
And you would also have to continue this item to a date certain.
Okay.
I can add that as part of my motion.
Supervisor Lejo had a comment to make.
One question was just, what came up from a community member, and I don't want to be clear on it. Somebody had mentioned that if we weren't approved, that Caltrans could move forward with the changes without approval. Is that correct? I just want to make sure we clear that moving forward. They need a permit from us to do any changes to those bridges?
I have Kelly Dunlin online. I defer to her, but I believe that they could move to the Coastal Commission without our approval.
Right. But they need a permit. Absent an approval from the Coastal Commission, they cannot proceed to make these changes as they desire. I just wanted for the public to know that they need to have approval from us or of the Coastal Commission if it gets, if the appeal is approved and it's set for hearing.
That is correct. A coastal development permit is necessary for this work.
Yeah, perfect. And so the only thing I would add, obviously, pursuing the, following the process and maybe through this group, whether an exception is possible, who does that, if an exception, Supervisor Church is saying there's no exception, but there was a comment made that the state engineer would have to give approval and that that would likely be denied. But we need to make that request, right? Let them give us an answer because the alternative is, if there is no exceptions, can the state legislature make an exception in law for historic bridges, right? But somebody like Senator Laird or someone named Don Addis, they're going to want to see, well, have you exhausted all the processing? And we would need to say yes. We went to, we worked with Caltrans, we set this committee, we requested an exception for these historic bridges, but we were denied by the state engineer. So that's why we're now asking for legislation. If there's, if the state law doesn't allow for this, would one of our local legislators be willing to entertain making a change in state laws to allow us? For me, that's why I'm talking about the significance and the beauty of this area, of the highway, requires to exhaust things that we haven't yet explored. And that's why I would just say if it requires a legislative fix, I think we need to pursue that potential option also. The only thing I said about the community, I hope, I think who you bring on there, Mary, was very important because obviously there could be folks who want no changes, right? And they're going to say no, they want to stick to the original plan. But I think we need to have a compromise, not the 10 rail tops or the view decks that are already on, we have schemes, planning schemes for, but if there's something more that meets the needs and could also help preserve the views in a better way than these 10 alternatives, I think whoever we want on there, somebody's going to be open-minded to that process, right? Versus just say no and let's just keep what we've always had there. I don't know if that's completely realistic this day. We're trying to pick an option that is better than what's already been explored.
I apologize through the chair and staff. Interject quickly. Within Title 20 in our appeals process, the board has 60 days to consider and render a final decision on the appeal. In the past, that's been extended by agreement by both the appellate and then the applicant. I would ask if County Council could weigh in, if the motion is ultimately move forward, create an additional working group and do additional discussion, if the applicant, appellate would be agreeable to that, or if they would prefer us to render a final decision, that they would be able to appeal.
Phil beat me to the punch on that. I was going to address that. It's pursuant to Title 20, Section 286070, subsection C. It does state what Phil said. So Caltrans would need to be in agreement on pushing the hearing on the appeal to a later date.
I see them conferring.
If not, the board will need to render a decision today.
Yes, we'd be agreeable to that.
May I just kind of follow up? Supervisor Lejo had made a reference that the committee members need to be people that have a little flexibility. I know you're really holding to some strict safety standards, but do you see some room for flexibility from what's been proposed?
I am not sure. We have, we have done, we have provided some flexibility in the 11 different types of designs. We went from a six-inch opening to a 10-inch opening. And I also want to clarify, exceptions can be granted, but not for the provisions that we were looking for in terms of the opening size or the shape of the rail. So it needs to be crash safe, but I am willing to, Caltrans is absolutely willing to work with you all and the appointed people to come to a solution to bring back.
Thank you. And the other, with the state engineer, I'm not even sure with how the process goes to make an appeal for an exception through him, for her, or whoever it is.
Okay. I also am not sure. I have never seen an exception to bridge design specifications made to the state bridge engineer. We will figure that out.
Yeah, I think Supervisor Lejo's comments on that, that, you know, we need to explore that potentially out of line, and then perhaps possibly some legislation if we can't make to an agreement, but hopefully we can come to one. So, okay. Thank you for those answers.
Thank you.
Yes, Supervisor?
Just a clarifying question. So there was a question from a community member about making changes without the board approval. So the improvements to the railings would need county permit, but the duty for Caltrans to maintain the railings as safe and the actions that you have to take, that Caltrans would have to take by putting up a K railing or potentially going to one-laning, that does not require county approval. So the, just to be really clear, like the risk, the path that we're walking on and the risks that we're taking by saying, I'm thrilled that we're going to potentially have a path to some level of agreement because that would be the ideal solution. And it's a little frustrating, we haven't been able to get to that point until now. But in the meantime, while we wait, the reality is, is that if we either deny this appeal or can't come to a conclusion, and there are safety concerns, Caltrans will and does not require our approval to go take measures that would further degrade the view of the bridges and the view from the bridge railings. So that's my understanding. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page about that reality that we're walking. And as of right now, we talk about the historic nature of our bridges. Right now, we've got a big ugly metal thing crossing through the middle of it. So until we get to some solution, that remains the solution, which is, in my opinion, not a solution for anybody. And we run the risk of having additional safety measures be put into place for whatever length of time it takes for us to get to a better outcome. But I'm really excited, Supervisor Adams, that you see a path to bringing some folks together. And I'm really pleased that Caltrans is open to continuing the conversation, hopefully to some place of agreement on the part of everyone.
Indeed. So any other comments onto here? Can we just, we'll go over the motion here then, which would...
Sorry, I do have one comment. For any people within Monterey County who are within earshot of my voice, if you are a creative engineer who's willing to put a little time into a very tricky problem, please contact my office.
So the motion before us, I want to make sure I kind of have this a little bit clear here, is a committee of three representatives from the community, three from Caltrans, representative from Housing and Community Development. I think you, the County Council, raised a couple of other matters.
I think you, Kelly can correct me, or Melanie can correct me, but I think you need to continue it to a date certain.
Yes, that would definitely be part of the motion. Go ahead.
Do we have a date certain?
Either March 30 or April, excuse me, either April 30 or May 7, I think was the date I said. Yeah.
Maybe Caltrans wants to weigh in because they have to come back.
Do you have a preference?
April 30 or May 7.
Or...
I would say May 7.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll use May 7 to be continued?
Great.
Are there amendments?
That's my motion.
If we can put this, we'll put this to a vote then?
My second holds.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
We'll see this again. All right, with this, we will move to County Administrative Officer. Comments?
Yes, just a couple of dates today from the Assessor Clerk Recorder's office, and this is, there's some work that's being done by their office in 2000, in this year, last year, they transitioned to a new management staff after elections. And 2023, '24, they closed assessment role with $83 billion, approximately $830 million back to the schools and various agencies. Effective the 12, February 12 of this year, they began offering civil ceremony services, so express ceremonies in their office for those wanting to be married. And then effective March the 4th of this year, they began offering civil ceremonies by appointment. And so as of March 15th of this year, they have performed 20 civil ceremonies, and the department hopes to have these important services that will benefit the public in general and help generate revenue for the department. So anybody looking to be married, they are now performing ceremonies again at the assessor's office.
That will go to board comments, and I'm going to let Supervisor Lejo go first since tomorrow's his birthday.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am taking off tonight. I won't be here even in town for my birthday, and it's not for a fun vacation. I'm leaving to go to El Paso because I am part of the National Association of Counties Immigration Task Force, and we're having an actual border visit in El Paso, which is on the other side of Juarez, Mexico. So I am joining my colleague, Commissioner David Stout, who's the chair, and several other county supervisors for visiting, to visit one of the migrant processing centers and some other experts there at the border. So I even had to miss my CSAC Executive Committee in Los Angeles tomorrow. I know the chair's going to bring this up, but I just want to thank staff for opening the Pajaro Center. I won't say more on that, but opening it tomorrow, I know it's going to be important for the community and to get that money, the $10 million out as soon as possible to the individuals and the small businesses that need it. I just wanted to briefly and say thank you, staff, and good luck. Hopefully, it's, we will be a success story in the state of California. And last thing I would say is Happy Easter, and I am turning 50 tomorrow, so thank you for the card, everybody. I appreciate the good words. Thank you. Muchas gracias.
Supervisor Adams, do you have anything?
Thank you. Ah, yes, I remember it well, 50. So a little more seriously, the scenic road draft EIR period ended on March 20th, and I'm looking forward to working with HCD on the next steps for moving this critical project along, which is the scenic road protective structure. I had one other little thing here. On Thursday, March 28th, at 5:30 on Zoom, our office, the District 5 office, is going to be having a community informational budget meeting. It's going to be by Zoom, and I encourage all 5th District residents to join the Zoom webinar to learn about the county's budgeting process as we move forward into budget season. The information is available on my County Supervisor Facebook page and can also be shared directly when you reach out to my office. And then finally, I just want to give a congratulatory message to all of the Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce Awards winners this past weekend. Congratulations to Ron Johnson, Mike Marata, Clarissa Rowe, and most importantly, the Business of the Year, which is always a big surprise, was, that's a very prestigious award, and it was won by Monterey Bay Football Club. So it was a pretty big deal to have such a new entity and such a creative one win that awards. That was really lovely. So, thank you.
Supervisor Lopez?
Yeah, thank you. First, just want to wish everyone a Happy Easter. Luis, happy birthday. Great to see you get to 50. You know, 50 more, may you live to be 200. But I want to share with everyone tomorrow as well, we'll be celebrating the King City High School Boys Soccer State Win with a parade through King City. So if you're around, look us up. The details are online. We're able to get some really cool, not even out there, but some really cool printouts of the newspaper cover from the week where they were able to pull that off and get those printed for each kid. So we're going to present them framed copies of those tomorrow. And I believe we're going to have representatives from Congresswoman Lofgren, Congresswoman Panetta, Senator Caballero, Senator Laird, so as our office and Speaker Rivas's office there to celebrate these young men and their second state championship in three years. So congratulations to them and look forward to celebrating with them tomorrow. Thank you.
Supervisor, ask you?
So many soccer players in our county. I love it. And Mary, I'm glad you were able to be there to celebrate with the chamber, and I'm glad I didn't accidentally give away the award winner last week when we were here. I gave a shout out. Let's see here. So a couple of announcements for District 4. We'll be having our next Wednesday with Wendy online virtual meeting, April 3rd at 5:30. We'll be live on Facebook and Zoom. We'll be having, inviting, welcoming some special guests from, to talk about military and veterans affairs, including a representative from the Women's Military Memorial Project out of Arlington Cemetery to talk about some of the ways that women, veterans who've served, can make sure that their service is registered and recognized. So we hope you all join us then. I had a great time on Saturday night at the Aglantris Dinner down the street from Mary's celebration. Forty years of service in our community with over 50,000 acres of prime ag land protected and conserved. So happy 40th anniversary to them. And then I wanted to just give a shout out, happy birthday to you Supervisor Lejo, but I wanted to tell my sister Christie, whose birthday it is today, that I love you and I'm so proud of you, and it's an honor to be your sister. So happy birthday, Christie.
Thank you. And I wanted to just follow up a little bit more detail on Supervisor Adams, excuse me. I mentioned that there was the county budget community hearings, and they're on Zoom, but they're also going to be in this chamber too, I believe. So just for those who want to come in person, you can come in the chamber. That's at 6:00 PM tomorrow.
Thursday.
Thursday, sorry. Yeah. That's not tomorrow, is it?
You wish.
What is tomorrow is the, as Supervisor Lejo referred to, the opening of the Pajaro Disaster Assistance Center, and will stay open until April 27th. $10 million unmet, to address the $10 million to, for folks that have unmet needs in the community. And I also hope that everything will go smoothly and thoroughly, and it can have an impact upon that community as quickly as possible for both residents and the businesses. I also wanted to make mention that Rancho Cielo did receive a $1 million, $1 million from the state for expanding its culinary academy, and should be congratulated on that. Good, yes, good deserve onto that. The other thing I just want to kind of mention is that John Freel, who helped the Watsonville Community Hospital in a critical time when it was facing through bankruptcy and possible closure, he's a former CAO, he came out to help them, guide them through some tough times, but he passed away on March 21st. And did, this last year or two of his life, did a great service in protecting the health care of people in the northern Monterey County and also in our neighboring, our neighbor to the north in Santa Cruz County. With that, yes?
One more little comment. I forgot, I thanked my staff today for a nice little lunch for my birthday, but of all people in this building, the one who brought me a personalized little dessert was our maintenance worker, Blanca Maldonado. Gave a little personal touch, just so you know, the little things she does to go out of her way, that was really from the heart. I want to acknowledge her because as I was walking in the hallway, public defender staff, everybody's like, Blanca, everybody's saying hello to her. But it just shows what kind of people we have in our building, that they take time to do something little, but very thoughtful and from the heart. Thank you.
So we have any readout from closed sessions?
No readout, Chair.
Okay. So with that, the Board of Supervisors and Board of Supervisors, the Water Resources Agency, we will adjourn till next week. Thank you. Thank you.